I'll order the January 9th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency, and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight I'm going to ask to be led by the newest member of the Washington Unified School District Board of Trustees, Alicia Cruz. All right, now we'll now proceed to our general administration agenda, item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the City Council. As is noted in our agenda, we're prohibited by state law from having a discussion or voting on any items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for public forum on items that are in our jurisdiction. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that is available at the front door and turn the card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has the chance to get heard, and to that end we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that indicates which agenda item we are currently considering. We take the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any individual item. So just as an example, if you happen to be here for, say, item 7, we accept the yellow cards up until the point when the staff is done with their presentation. Once the council's conversation and the public testimony has begun, we don't take any additional yellow cards. So if you're intending to speak on an item, please, you have up until that point, but I would turn in the card as quickly, as soon as possible. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can create some anxiety and nervousness. So we do ask that there not be any boos, or applause, or cat calls, or any other kind of demonstrations, and that we maintain a civil discourse in the chambers, and that all testimony be done at the microphone with the microphone on, because we are being televised, and to the millions of viewers at home, they can't hear if you're shouting from the audience or if the microphone's not on. All right, so under item 1A, we have one request to speak by Mr. Bill Lowell.
Checking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record, and I noticed over the years, you've always been encouraging people to shop in West Sacramento, and for those of us that don't drive cars, especially when the weather's rather adverse, I find it sadly interesting that at our shopping center, Lake Washington and Jefferson, where the Pheasant Club is, to the south of Fire Station 45, there are no bus shelters on either side, and yet we've got, we do have the bus stops across on Jefferson on both sides to the west, and so if nothing else, I'm suggesting we have a bus shelter across from Fire Station 45 that will protect against the stormy weather, as well as provide shade during the hot weather, and if you say, "Well, we don't have any extra shelters," well, catty corner from that, in front of Lowell's hardware and lumber and so forth, there's a bus shelter there, but no bus comes by there. So it seems to be like it would be a much better investment if we just relocated that catty corner to the station right across from the fire station, and people shopping there would have a more comfortable place to shop and wait for the bus, even if it were stormy weather, and there's at least one other shelter to the further south and further west, across from an existing shelter, and there are no bus coming by there either, so that one could be relocated there also. But anyway, I think we should give further thought to many of our other shelters, like the ones on West Capitol Avenue that face the south. I think they should be relocated 180 degrees so that you have protection from that stormy rain during those stormy days, and I just think it makes more sense, because rain doesn't always come just straight down, as we know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Our city manager has noted those suggestions. I would, you know, it sometimes it'll look as though we have surplus bus shelters, because there are shelters in newly-built shopping centers or neighborhood subdivisions. Those are, have been constructed as, in general, pursuant to requirements that we have of the builder, and so we can't, in those cases, we can't simply move them to another location. They're built, paid for by the private property developer in advance of the bus service being created, so, but we'll look at the full range of opportunities that are there to be able to expand the shelters. All right, that brings us to item 1B, which is Council Communications. Are there reports, are there communications this evening? Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yellow County Housing Authority met on December 13th. We just received an update on the year's accomplishments, but more significantly after that, we had the first meeting of the Ten Year Plan Commission. I was voted in as a vice chair, and Cecilia Aguilar is the chair of that, and so what that's going to do is that commission's going to run after the Housing Commission, Housing Authority meeting, which is really going to help integrate some of the homeless issues with the housing. It's really kind of one of the root causes of homelessness is lack of homes, and also it's going to allow us to get a quorum. In the past, the Ten Year Planning Commission, it was, I don't know, 20 commissioners, and it was very difficult to get a quorum, so this is basically Cecilia Aguilar, Skip Davies, Lucas Ferrex, myself, Mike McGowan, and Bill Pride, who's the representative for the Housing and Poverty Action Coalition, who are the commissioners on that. So we'll be able to at least get a quorum, and what this will also do is allow better coordination of services, because Yellow County now, the Housing Authority is responsible for doing the agendas and having the meeting place, so it solves a lot of problems having this meeting right after Housing Authority.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johansson. Other communications? Mr. Vegas?
We have a couple of them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this morning, the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District met, and the one item to note, there was at least initial hearing introducing some amendments to the ordinance to move closer to codifying the changes in the rates and the fee structure as a result of the rate and fee study, the first phase of that work. So the official voting will take place on the 23rd, but there was a first introduction of some of the changes. And then also earlier this evening, the Port Commission met, and we had a good conversation, a series of meetings taking place on the development of a business plan, and we heard this evening presentations by staff, very good presentations, I might add, on real estate assets, the infrastructure cost estimates, as well as potentially new operating models for the port, and then also there'll be a public hearing here at City Hall on January 22nd in the evening, I think it's 22nd, right, 22nd, for the public to participate in here and ask questions about the future status of the port and its related business plan. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vegas. There's two. I don't have my calendar in front of me, but the Sacramento Council of Governments, I think I previewed last, at our last meeting, that we were about to receive the award that we did receive for Blueprint Excellence for the, and Ms. Hamilton and Katie Jacobson came for that. That was a plus. The streetcar, we had a meeting earlier this week that Congresswoman Matsui had arranged a region-wide leadership meeting with Secretary of Transportation LaHood from the federal government, the Federal Transit Administrator for the federal government, and the regional Transit Administrator for Region 9, along with Congressman Matsui, representatives of the state, the executive branch of the state government, several council members from the city of Sacramento, Supervisor Serna from the county of Sacramento. It was probably the broadest reign, regional range of civic and business leaders and community leaders, transit leaders, and officials in support of our streetcar project, and to make the case to Secretary LaHood, who was here for the groundbreaking for the Blue Line extension of light rail down towards Casumus River College. We spent an hour with him and with the administrator going through the streetcar project with presentations by us and the city of Sacramento, but also by Terry Basset at Yellow County Transportation District, and Kirk Trost at Secog, and Mike Wiley from Regional Transit, who all did an outstanding job, I think, in terms of conveying to the, to FTA how far we've come in terms of building a strong proposal, a strong operating model, a strong financing plan, an actual route. All of the issues that the federal government had raised questions about earlier, we've really tackled, so the part of the point of that session was to convey that, because I've met with the secretary now three times about the project, and they get and understand the value of it as a, both as a transit project, but also as an economic development project for some of the most significant infill areas in the country. When you add up the Bridge District and the rail yards and Railies Landing and other areas along the route of the streetcar, it's really a major, a major economic boost for the country in addition to the region and the city. So they get the importance of the project. We got some direct feedback from the FTA Administrator about stuff to pay attention to, and fortunately, that's all stuff that we are doing at the, between our jurisdictions around locking down the governance structure, the operating structure, make sure we have the appropriate operating agency, which we keep trying to read the tea leaves with FTA, which one they would prefer, and we've, I think we've now been through all of the possibilities. All of us have been the operating entity at one point or another, and the financing piece and the private sector participation are clearly areas that we need to get, get honed down as well. Our intention still is to submit this year, as when the small starts program, the new regulations come out, and all, the main thing that the FTA Administrator wanted us to know was that if we do that, we better be ready, that in the past, you could submit your project, and he used RT's Blue Line as an example, and if you ran into an obstacle here, a hurdle there, an unexpected thing here, they'd work with you and you'd still get your project through, and now, under their new rules, you got two years to get to the next stage, and if you don't get there, then you are out of the line. And so don't get in line unless you are ready to get to the next step, and so I think, given the financial and capacity-building work that we have put in, that RT has put in, in particular, the two of us, along with Yellow Bus and the city of Sacramento, that we are, we've got all the pieces coming together, so I think we'll be fine in that, in that regard, but it was a good, it was a good to get pre-clearance from them. I'm going to be in Washington DC for most of next week and for the inauguration, and my understanding is that Mayor Johnson and I are going to meet directly with Secretary LaHood again about the project, and also about the bridge project, but principally about the streetcar, to make that case, and then we already have a meeting scheduled with the Federal Transit Administration as well to follow, in DC, with the administrator to follow up on the meeting earlier in this week, so I thought it was a very positive thing. The business leaders that spoke up were uniformly enthusiastic, and the political leadership, our colleagues from the city of Sacramento have, have never been more effusive in their commitment to the, to the project. Oh, I should say, the other, the other issue that the administrator brought up, the secretary brought up was, you, the Sacramento region needs to have its priorities clear, right? You can't, and, you know, he had just come from the press conference for the Blue Line Extension, and Councilwoman Pennell, bless her heart, had, you know, I guess during her remarks during that period, said, "And thanks for being here, Mr. Secretary, this is a great day. Now we just need money to extend it even further, and we need money for the line to the airport, and we need money for the streetcar," and he was left with the impression that we don't have any priorities, and so we tried to correct that in that, in that session, and say, "Look, we know that this next, what we're, what RT's focus is going to be is on construction of the Blue Line. They don't have the ability to ask for any more money for light rail for at least a couple of years, and so while that window is open is when we want to go in on the streetcar project." So they're not competing with one another, but we're attentive to that issue, so I thought it was positive as a, as the next step, and we just have to deliver now, so. Because I was there, and thanks to the mayor who represented it, West Sacramento, and spoke on behalf of the project on both the, for all the entities that were there, but the business owners who did, the business leaders who did show up were both a part of West Sacramento, Mark Friedman from the Fulcrum Group, and then Jack Ennis from Causters, both spoke very highly of the project, and how their support was really critical, so thank you. And I should say, Congressman Matsui called me later that day to follow up for half an hour around what our next, what the strategy ought to be and the next steps. It's clearly she is prepared to make this a signature priority for her, which is going to be necessary for us to succeed, but it was, it was really gratifying to see the level of engagement that she put into this, organizing this meeting in the first place, bringing all the parties together. It sent the strongest message yet on the project to the federal government that this was more than just a little West Sac thing, but this was a major priority and the, you know, the principal priority for the region, so very good. All right, item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions, that we have that scheduled for two weeks from tonight. I think I've got most every, I think I have everyone's nominations almost, so if you haven't given nominations to me, please, please do so, but I'm intending to make all the, the actual appointments at the meeting on the 23rd. We, I have personally interviewed now 45 of the applicants, and I know other members of the council have talked to several as well. We've had over 100, so we're getting through that, that process as well. A lot of very, very talented, enthusiastic folks in our community who really want to volunteer and step up to make their community even better with a wide variety of perspectives and views, but it's, it was actually quite heartwarming and inspiring to, to, to talk to a lot of these folks. So two weeks from tonight, we'll have the nominations for the council to consider. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items 2 through 5. Are there any items, remember, the council wishes to remove, or any item for a separate question or comment? Mr. Johansson, number 4. Any others? All right, item 4 is consideration of lease agreement with Dell Financial Services for information technology servers and infrastructure. Mr. Johansson.
Who is the, yeah, I remember the staff is on.
Mr. Johansson, I can answer some questions, and our IT manager, Rob Miller, is here. If there's anything of a super-technical nature, he gets here to answer those.
I think this is more, I mean, it's a, almost a, close to $600,000 expense, and it's out of the budget cycle. That was, that was one problem I had, and the other, I'm not, you know, there's not really a lot here to determine if this is reasonable or not. It looks like the city is just going with a sole source, and there's really not a lot of competition going on here. I was kind of confused. What does it mean that the city has went to Dell's solution?
Well, several years ago, we examined different companies. We did a, an RFI, if you will, to determine what would be our platform. For a long, many, many years, the city was standardized on HP, and we reviewed that and decided that we would be, be more cost-effective, and we would still have the same level of quality by going with Dell. And so basically, you want all of your equipment to be on a standardized platform for compatibility purposes, and so the shopping that you're referring to, we've done a few years ago, and we standardized ourselves on a Dell platform, again, having originally been on an HP system.
Okay, and I guess then, just getting back to the budget issue, it looks like the reason to do it now is they're giving you a discount, that you think that might not be there.
Well, there's, there's a couple of reasons. One was we were offered an attractive financing plan, and then the, we have our SAN, that the storage area network device, is not going to be supported by Dell as of next month, and we're starting to have problems with it. The other option, the other issue is, we do not have a backup location for a disaster recovery operation, and we wanted, we were, we used to be part of a disaster recovery JPA that was combined with a lot of other cities and counties, and that dissolved last year, and so we're, we're a little concerned that we don't have an backup location where we could restore things very quickly in the event that there is some kind of, some kind of disaster. You have several years ago, you might remember, at Stone Boulevard, we had a flood at City Hall, and we had to evacuate a lot of equipment and, and restore operations very quickly in order to keep business running. The program that's, that's laid out here would continue what we've been budgeting for many years for replacement, replacement computers and IT infrastructure, and that's what's being proposed here.
So would that basically bring this issue forward? We would eventually have to deal with this, but is, is it currently in the budget right now?
The, the amount that we normally budget every year is in the budget right now. This, the annual lease payment will be slightly higher than what's in the budget right now, but we have, we have that in operating funds in the IT operation budget. The majority of it is in the equipment fund, which we budget approximately $80,000 to $100,000 every year for replacement IT infrastructure.
All right, and lastly, in terms of the disaster recovery system, are there any grant funds available that we can use toward that?
No, we consider that, and because it's so wide-ranging, you know, there's a, we consider the possibility of trying to get Homeland Security funds for that, but a disaster could be anything like the vandalism we had at City Hall on Stone Boulevard several years ago, which clearly wouldn't qualify for that, and so we think this is a fairly critical, a critical need that we have.
Thanks for that clarification.
All right. I actually, I think the line of questions, I'm glad you raised them, Mr. Johansson. I, the, when I read the item, I would, would like to see more information for, just as a, as a standard procedure when you're, when we're considering switching from a, you know, depreciation replacement approach to a lease purchase approach as a, or a lease, or just a regular lease approach. I mean, there are pretty standard models for how to compare those, you know, across indicators that are more than just the question of what's the annual payment, and in terms of looking at the potential values of each, and so I didn't see that. That's not here, and so I think those kinds of questions are entirely appropriate. This, but this locks us into this, the five-year, this lease purchase program and approach for, for five years, correct? If we approve this tonight?
That's correct.
Can we, I mean, do you need, do we, do we need, do you need approval of this this evening?
No, if not necessary.
If we were to, I would, I would like to get some additional, I mean, not more, not more separate information, but just, just some standard, the standard comparative analysis between the lease, the lease approach, the lease purchase approach, and what we're, what we're currently doing.
We can do that, thank you.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Johansson. So other than item 4 then, is there a motion on the consent agenda? It's been moved by Mr. Johansson, and seconded by Mayor Protem Ledesma. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed hearing, none? That motion carries. That brings us to item 6, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 13-1, amending the book of fees for various city regulatory activities, products, and services. Mr. Sharma? And we have a, the city manager has put before us at our desks amendments to item 6 that make an adjustment to the proposed wedding fees, so perhaps Mr. Sharma can cover that amendment as part of his presentation, but that would be a part of the motion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Nitesh Sharma, city budget manager. The book of fees we are presenting today consists of our three items. In February, we're going to be bringing other fee updates that will include development, engineering, planning, and general fee updates. To begin with, business license surcharge and late fees. Business license surcharge is a new fee, is basically enacted with the passing of SB 1186, and SB 1186 requires agencies to collect a dollar additional fee on a business license to, and use the funds to implement regulations related to providing access to disabled individuals. Well, 30% of these fees will be remitted back to the state, while 70% will be retained, and basically will be tracking this fee separate, the revenue, and will be used for the program expenditures. Second part of this business license update is the late fee. Currently, our late fee is $40 per, per late applications or renewal, and this actually equates to almost about 70 to 80% if you're a home-based business or office business. So we actually compared this fee with the other cities around in our region, and we determined that we are pretty high, so we are actually proposing to reduce this fee to $10. The next fee item is the wedding fee. This is a new fee, and this is actually a new service available to our citizens, and the city clerk has been commissioned by the Yellow County to perform these services. The proposed fees are based on our cost recovery for an estimated time to provide services. I'd like to make a note, as Mr. Mayor, you've mentioned, on page 2 of the staff report, the city clerk's staff time presented is showing as $64. We've, we have later on clarified that, and it actually is $102 per hour, so that's one correction, and the second correction is the optional witness fee, which is $30 per half hour. The third fee item that I'd like to just discuss briefly is the alarm fee. On October 17th, 2012, the council approved the alarm ordinance 12-8, basically amending the municipal code regarding the alarm permits and regulations. We actually did not include the fee schedule at that time, so we're just bringing the fee schedule. We had a previously approved alarm fees, but we actually never, the program was in place, but we never enforced it, so we are, this is a new program, as you have heard before, we're going to enforce it, and this basically will help reduce the number of false alarms calls. This concludes staff's presentation. I'd like to return it to you, Mr. Mayor, for any further questions and open the public hearing.
Questions for staff at this time? Mayor Protem Ledesma.
Thank you, just, thank you for bringing this update, and just on the business fee, just in doing the research and seeing that the late fee was adjusted to fit our, fit the region, what they're charging, I did have a, just a quick question on the CASP fee.
Yes.
So 30% is going to this, of that revenue that comes in, goes to the state, is that fair?
Yes, yes.
And are those for state projects, or maybe this can be answered later on with a memo, not to take up this item with us? Just to get some clarification on this fund that's being passed through, through us, and then obviously 70% is going back to us, and I'm, I'm sure they're dictating or regulating what we use that fee for.
Yes.
Those, those funds for, and I would just like some additional information on that at some point, on both those items.
I was actually hoping to get some information on that right now.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just wanted, this is about the fees.
Of that 70%, you're projecting that that will generate, 5% is for our collection and processing, and the rest is for the program of the certified access specialist services, and that, and you're projecting that's going to generate $2,500 in revenue.
Yes.
Is your projection that that $2,500 is going to cover the cost of the increased certified access specialist services?
Probably not all of the costs, so we will, there will be some subsidy with that. I don't believe it will cover all the cost.
So under, is this a state, is this a state-mandated local cost? I mean, is there a claim?
Mr. Mayor, maybe I could help with that. We are currently, have the obligation to do access review right now. This additional surcharge was to help provide a funding source to do that, so while the money that we're going to be receiving is probably just a little bit to help with what we're already doing, and it will most likely be used for, for training for staff to help with their ongoing review of the requirements.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, then we're going to open the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Sharma, on item 6. No requests to speak, but because this is a public hearing item, does anyone wish to address the council on item 6? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, return to the council for any further questions, discussion, or for a motion. It's been moved by Mr. Vegas, and seconded by Mayor Protem Vegas. Seeing no further discussion, all, did you do it twice? Did I say your name? I.
Can I do that?
Yeah. Seconded by Mayor Protem Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed hearing, none? Motion carries. Item 7 is a public hearing on Urgency Interordance 13-1, making findings and extending the temporary moratorium on the outdoor cultivation of medical marijuana up to 22 months and 15 days, and in case anyone has joined us since the beginning of the meeting, just as a reminder, because I think this is probably our most, the item with the most requests to speak, that if you do wish to speak on this item, you need to turn in one of the yellow cards prior to the, prior to the time that Ms. Hamilton is done talking. All right, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor Cabaldin, members of the city council. We're before you this evening to ask for an extension of the moratorium, the 45-day interim moratorium that was initiated on December 5th. Since that time, we've been gathering ordinances from other jurisdictions. We've been gathering data on cultivation of marijuana with regard to the costs, comparing outdoor cultivation with indoor cultivation. We have been gathering information on court cases, and the city attorney's office is beginning their review of those and opinions that have been issued. I have received some suggested regulations, and is beginning their review of those and opinions that have been issued. I have received, um, some suggested, uh, regulations and some information on court cases from, uh, an advocate that's been in attendance at the last, uh, meetings. And we also are beginning to get more information in on, uh, criminal cases, uh, both additional information from West Sacramento police as well as, uh, we just received today some information from Yonet. And so, the information is still flowing, we are still looking at it, we are, are not prepared tonight to have an, an ordinance, uh, for you to consider. And so, we are recommending, um, for the full extension of twenty-two months and fifteen days, based on our experience going through, uh, the medical marijuana dispensaries considerations. Uh, during those considerations, uh, we came back to you, uh, multiple times for extensions and ultimately, we ended up with the maximum extension. Uh, you do have alternatives to consider, uh, to the maximum. You could choose to extend it only ten months and fifteen days, which would bring the, uh, end date to November of this year. Um, or you could choose to allow the, the current moratorium to just subside, in which case, that moratorium would end on January nineteenth. So, that concludes my presentation this evening, um, at this time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Charlie, the, the options to extend, so you selected the, the longer term, are there things that are going to be happening between now and, say, ten months that would be worthy of consideration or what's the rationale for the longer term? It obviously gives us more time, that's, that's-
Yeah, it was purely based on our experience through the dispensary action. Um, we are actively working on this. Uh, we would endeavor to try to get something back to you this year. We don't want to draw this out. Um, but there is a lot of information out there. We're trying to bring forth, uh, the best ordinance and options for your consideration as well as respond to your questions for additional analysis. And then, also, there's, there's quite of activity in the courts and, um, we want to make sure that whatever we bring, we bring back to you considers that latest, uh, information from them.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So, we would endeavor to get it back to you this year.
So, are there, are there any particular things that you're waiting for that have, I mean, that, that are, um, I guess, you know, are there any things that you're waiting for that are going to help sway or determine what the regulations or what the policies being recommended by staff are going to be or is there? I guess I'm just trying to make sure that we're being mindful of the amount of time that we're asking for, if it's, so, uh, let me ask this, if we're to move forward with the recommended twenty-two months, are things going to move any slower or faster in terms of the regulatory framework that you would propose? I mean, obviously, you have more time, so you could take more time, but I guess I'm just trying to be mindful of the fact that, um, we, if, should we select twenty-two months that we would move just as quick as we would if we were to select ten months or is that probably not the case?
We will be moving, um, as quickly as we can. Obviously, the courts, um, they have their schedule and, you know, we can't dictate that. That's probably the more lengthy process is analyzing what's coming out of the courts, um, as well as compiling the ordinances and various options for you. We're working, we're having to work this into our work program. This is not something we had contemplated. Uh, we do have some other high priorities, um, if we were to push for sooner, um, meaning, you know, if we had to, if you made this the top priority, some other priorities would have to be, uh, put aside. But our efforts are to integrate this in and get this back to you quickly.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, then, we're going to open the public hearing on item seven. We have a few requests to speak on this item. The first is by Teresa De Mars.
Makes me a little nervous, so, um, I have, uh, great concern about this moratorium. It seems as if, uh, this movement to, uh, limit a patient's right affordable, to affordable, um, medication, and we all know it's on alternative choice, that the city of West Sacramento, if you pass this moratorium and you take away our right to grow our own medicine and you're saying, "Well, you know, you can grow it indoors," but that economically is not feasible for many, many people, as you will see and, and others that are coming before me that will show you the carbon footprint and exactly what is needed to grow, um, our medicine indoors. So, my concern is this, is we're moving forward as a community and we're saying that we're, what kind of a community do we want here in West Sacramento? Do we want a community that is all-inclusive? Do we want to feel like we're embracing everyone or are we going to say, "Because you are a patient who chooses to use an alternative medicine, we are going to make sure that we throw as many stumbling blocks in front of you to trip you up, to make you pay more so that you cannot have your medicine safely and affordably." And so, this moratorium says to us, "Well, you can take it indoors, you can pretty much go back in the closet." It's a small group of people that I feel that we're just being discriminated against and judged. And so, this issue is huge, not only for me, but for many, many other people, many more that are afraid, they're afraid to even come here and say, "I'm a medical cannabis patient. I need this and want this as a choice. I'm choosing something that's an alternative that people are afraid of. There's a lot of fear surrounding cannabis and its use and a lot of misinformation and I'm just hoping that the city and, and that our city council will consider not only just my words, but the, but all the words from the people who are too, too afraid to step forward." And I don't, you know, I understand the idea that people are going to come and try to steal your stuff. I, I had that. But you know what? When they're done stealing my cannabis, they're going to come and steal your television sets and your cars and the things off your front porch, because a thief is a thief. And a medical cannabis patient who grows their own medicine, we are within the rights, uh, California law, two fifteen, says that we can do this. And so, I don't, I just don't understand how all of a sudden we can be made into the criminal, that all of a sudden that the, that the property owner and the patient, all of a sudden doesn't, doesn't get the right to, um, doesn't get the right to live in the city like anyone else, I guess. So, thank you.
Christopher De Mars.
Good evening, council. To avoid confusion, I'd like to define a word before I start. Freedom. Freedom is the human right to live your life however you damn well please, so long as you don't interfere on another's right to do the same. Seem a fairly decent definition? This bill interferes in the freedom of marginalized, sick, disabled, and dying people. We're a small community, fairly poor, in an economic downturn, in a country with the worst healthcare system in the industrialized world. People can't afford co-pays, much less the full prescription costs outside of insurance. But people can grow a plant in their backyard. This is the most beautiful growing conditions on earth. We have the best soil, long, hot, dry summers. All it takes is a little bit of guano and you too can supply your medicine for you a year. You don't have to spend any money. You don't have to take five pills to counteract the side effects of that one pill. You want to drive it into the closet, inside. Inside is not where you grow plants. It consumes massive amounts of power. It's all supplied by fossil fuels here, now, majority, adding to a huge carbon footprint. Furthermore, instead of just guano, you suddenly have to use a lot of chemical fertilizers, a lot of pesticides, herbicides, miticides, fungicides. In case you didn't take Latin, side is kill. You're putting chemicals designed to kill things into our water treatment system, because where else are your hired uponic growers going to dump their effluent? They don't have to register with pesticide use reporting database, they don't have to fulfill, uh, water quality standards, it goes straight into our waste stream. Are you prepared to have your solid waste system have to deal with an influx of agricultural The state does test your downstream water. If suddenly a lot of weird things start coming up that isn't cleaned out by a standard domestic waste processing, you'll have to pay state fines and upgrade your facilities. I imagine you're as broke as any other local agency. You don't have the money for that. I urge you to vote for freedom, to vote for the freedom for people to take care of themselves, use the sunlight we have, the dirt we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoe De Mars.
I want to address the carbon footprint that will cause, that will be caused growing medical marijuana indoors. And I, as a citizen, am worried about the future and how much the CO2 levels will be spiked if they are grown indoors. And I've done some research and it showed that, um, what, that one point six percent of CO2 production will be heightened if we grow indoors and it will, we need to, to grow indoors, you need to use a lot more generators and, as you can see on the picture, you can see that you need a CO2 generator. And if you grow that indoors, that's also heightening the CO2 in a house and that could potentially put the people that are living there at risk. And that, and as we know, we buy machines to see, sensors to see if there's the amounts of CO2 in a house and we don't want it to be, we want the levels to be lower, so if we're going indoors, then that would spike it. And I think that I'm worried about the carbon footprint and how it will increase the carbon footprint and it, it's better to grow outdoors, it's the sun. That's natural energy that was given to us and taking it away isn't right. And I think that growing indoors is dangerous because if we have to put, like Christopher said, we have to put more pesticides and herbicides to kill other things that may grow inside and there's, it would, it's dangerous and it should be grown outside. And I think that, I want to say that, um, sun is nat, sun naturally grows plants and before we were, we, people were growing medical marijuana, it, it's been, it's grown in the wild. It's grown in places, in other places like orange trees and apple trees and other plants and it's natural. It wasn't man-made, it wasn't created by man, we didn't make it, it was given to us and that's what I have to say.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Zoe. And Jürgen Bateman?
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldin and members of the council. I want to thank you for addressing this, uh, very sensitive issue and, and the danger of becoming one of the most unpopular, unpopular guys here tonight. I want to just, uh, provide a little bit of balance on the other side of the, the issue because while I, I sympathize with, with people that, um, gravely need, uh, the use of medical marijuana, um, it does, it does carry some, um, some issues with it for neighboring, uh, communities. I want to make it really clear that I have no problem with people smoking marijuana, it's not my deal and I understand that it, it might be beneficial for them and their health and, and whatever treatment they're going through. But the cultivation of marijuana in a residential neighborhood, uh, does have some, uh, various adverse concern for, for nearby neighbors. And I'm sure it's already been covered at previous meetings, but, um, the smell by the crop can be, uh, pretty, um, annoying and irritating for, um, uh, property owners close by. And, um, um, sometimes there's overwatering taking place and drainage issues that can affect neighbors as well, uh, into their property. And, and, um, not least, it, it does have, uh, when plants gets very high and, uh, it has been experienced that plants can, you know, become ten, twelve feet high and, uh, they're visible from, uh, street or parks in, in the neighborhood, it, it can, uh, attract a criminal element. And, uh, if it does that, uh, I think people would, uh, not like for, for that criminal element to access your property, um, you know, access the crop through your property. And so, it does have a safety and security, uh, concern that just can't be ignored. So, while I'm understanding of, of the medical use and unfortunately, I, I think it, it might be a certain segment of the, the population that, that ruins it for, for people that really need it, uh, when, um, cultivation for personal use takes on a more, um, um, production capability for, for sales i- in a residential neighborhood, then they need to buy an acre of land and, and grow it in, in a, in a different zoning. And, and my fear is that we get a quasi, um, uh, quasi zoning where you have agricultural growing of, of marijuana. So, uh, we got to ask ourselves that even if we might not be directly affected by it, would you like to have fifteen plants growing in your backyard and if not, how can we solve the problem? I'm no expert on it and I don't know what the solution is, but, uh, you know, I like milk, but I, I'm sure you wouldn't mind, you wouldn't want me to keep a cow in my backyard, so that's just the other side of the coin. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that concludes the testimony on item seven, so we're going to close the public hearing, return to the council first for any, uh, but actually first to Ms. Hamilton for any clarifying comments or, or based on any of the issues or questions raised during the public hearing.
Uh, no comment on the, the issues raised.
Anything questions for staff? Mr. Johannesson?
Yeah, Charlene, um, this light's not working, I can't tell if it's on or not. Are we looking at any alternates, alternatives to outdoor cultivation that any jurisdictions, for example, having, um, uh, placed that aside where, um, like a co-op kind of thing that would have growing, um, in a specific location? Have, are you gathering any of that, any of that kind of information?
Yeah, there are some ordinances, uh, out there that have been adopted that have, uh, some of those types of uses, so yeah, we are looking at that.
When you come back, I would be interested to see how those are working, what kind of security they have and if there's, there's obviously going to be a cost to do that, um, some type of monitoring, some, some type of fencing or something like that, but I'd be interested to see if, what the experience is with that type of thing.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Not so much a question, just, just, um, just a comment. I guess, um, for me, this is a priority. Um, I mean, I know it's a resource issue, certainly it's going to be one regardless of what we do. I mean, no matter what we decide to do, someone's going to have to police it and regulate it and, and so, there's, there are going to be costs associated with it and that's just the cost of doing business in a community where we care enough to take the issues up and, and have thoughtful conversations about them. It's unfortunate, though, that we have unintended consequences of what we, every time we, we push on one end, there are unintended consequences on the other end in trying to strike a balance about how we manage and, and police and govern and regulate our city, uh, to the extent that we can.
we can. I'm not convinced that 22 months is, is, is the right amount of time. I don't know if 10 is either. I don't know what the exact amount of time is, but I guess my, my, my interest is to figure out a way to make this more of a priority than maybe than what it is right now. I mean, I know our plate's pretty full, but I would certainly be interested in, in figuring out how to shuffle the deck to see that we put the appropriate amount of resources into drafting a policy that strikes a better balance than what this interim policy will be. I think there, there are certainly good arguments on both ends. There's no question, we've had plenty of discourse here about the medical necessity that, that a lot of folks have demonstrated. But the flip side is presented also is that it's, it's a pain in the butt for people who don't need it and have to deal with the consequences of having it, you know, 15, 20 plants adjacent to their backyard where you smell it all year long. So having said that, I, I, you know, I don't know what the perfect amount of time is, but I, I'm definitely interested in raising the, the bar here and, and figuring out a way to make it more of a priority so that we do have dedicated resources. So as you said, I mean, something else is going to have to get set aside. I, I would try to figure out a way to, 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 to manage that so that we are putting the right amount of attention on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protamila Desma?
Thank you. Yeah, first of all, thanks for those coming out today and your, your thoughtful testimony, your thoughtful remarks. Appreciate both sides of the, of the, of the issue and, and certainly want to make sure that the folks who depend on medical marijuana are, are understanding that we're, we're trying to be sensitive to your needs and we're also trying to manage, as was pointed out, the other side of the coin on this, because it has become an issue, not just in our jurisdiction, but in other local cities in the region who have taken up similar ordinances. El Grove and Sacramento are two of them that are also looking at it. I'm, I'm with Councilmember Viegas on, I'm trying to understand the timeframe on this and, and trying to, a 22-month extension, we're going from a temporary moratorium to almost a lot, it's, it's, there's a certain sense of permanence to it as we kind of wait to kind of gather more information. I am, I am very supportive of this effort because what we have asked for is for a thoughtful policy decision. As they'll probably, at local, at the local government level, we're left to regulate this, we're left to deal with trying to manage this at our level. And I, I, I don't want to be flippant about it as maybe as the, the state who enacted the act and, but maybe love some vagueness to it that we're left to deal with. I don't want to be that way. But there, there, I have a sense that there is enough information based on what other jurisdictions are doing or, or trying to do, that we might be able to leverage some of that knowledge. And it's just 22 months seems a long time out. And I do want to raise this kind of up in the priority list. Of course, I'm sure our city manager will come back and let me know what the other priority that would be falling off. But that is something we just have to deal with. We're going to be hit or, or deal with things as they come up throughout the year. And so I just, I just fundamentally have a sort of a management issue with, with sort of putting this off. We know what we have to deal with and at a certain time, we just need to make a decision with the knowledge we have. So I'm, I'm kind of supportive of bringing it back to the November 2013 timeframe and wanting to see what, if we can put together, using, thinking about the alternatives that Mr. Johansson brought up, thinking about the other things we've already brought up in this discussion about what we want to consider in, in such an ordinance. I think we can, that should give us some time to, to gather that. So those are my comments.
I think what's going to eventually drive, whatever ordinance passes, it's going to be the courts. I think that it's going to go through the judicial system and once there is enough decisions rendered and everything, then I think that other communities such as ours are going to follow them. I mean, I don't, I think that 22 months is a, it, it, it's a good number to start at. But I mean, I think that Charlene will be continually working on this. And if the courts and if the state of California and if the federal government, if they all get their act together, we'll say within 12 months. Doesn't have to stay at 22 months. It can come back at 12 months or 16 months. I think what Charlene's trying to do is just put the 22-month figure out there because that's what in essence the law, the, allows us to do at the maximum level. So, you know, I don't mind if we hear this again in 12 months or 16 months, whatever it may be. But we need to make sure that we have put enough time aside so that we can put a, an ordinance that is really going to pass the muster, an ordinance that is going to go through the court system, an ordinance that will possibly address everything even at a federal level, because they're going to be looking into this all, also. I mean, you've got two states, Washington and Colorado, that have both, both passed this. The problem that they have is you can't grow it. So it's, it's the supply portion that Washington and Colorado are really going to have some real issues with. I mean, sure, you can smoke it, but where are you going to get it unless it's grown illegally? So I mean, I, and I don't want to get into, you know, having people grow stuff illegally. But at the same time, I think that the 22-month gives us the leeway that we need. And if certain things happen all the way through the line, then down the line, then you can move to the 12 months, 16 months, whatever it may be. Thank you.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, maybe just to add on to some of the comments, one of our primary obligations here is to help protect the health and safety of the residents and it is a balancing issue. You know, there, there is a freedom to, 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 to do certain things, but there's also the freedom for people to be able to live peacefully in their homes. And it's not unlike other debates that are going on in this country right now, who has a, who has a higher right to do what they, they want to do. But our job up here, I think, is to make sure that all citizens are protected to the extent we can. And a part of the problem now is we don't really have the information yet. We, we don't have the crime statistics yet. We don't have the analysis from other cities. We don't have, you know, kind of look at some of these options. So we don't really know, we can't make a decision at this point, but, you know, I, I would want to have this come back in November. And, and maybe at that point, we can always extend it, but, you know, not with the expectation that it's going to be extended, but, you know, if it comes back in November, it is, is going to be extended for some reason that's a reason not in our control. For example, we're waiting for a major court decision or something that justifies extending it beyond that, because I think we should at some point make a decision on this. We have to make a decision in 22 months anyway. So I think we are. At some point, we're going to have to say yes or no.
Correct. The 22 months and 15 days would be the maximum.
Right, right. So why, why, if we have the information, my opinion is to, let's go ahead and make a decision on that. But again, we need to make a decision with the information we've got at hand and then based on the balancing of, you know, people that have a legitimate need to grow it and people that are maybe affected adversely by it.
So in some ways, this is an incredibly not complex issue. I mean, if this were just, if there was no such thing as the US government and the state government, state of California, we could solve this easily. I mean, we, we deal with problems like this all the time. Somebody mentioned, Jürgen mentioned the cow. I mean, we, we regulate, in some places you can have chickens, some places you can't have chickens. You can have this many chickens, but not that many chickens and you can't have the chicken coop right next to somebody else's house. I mean, we do this all the time. That's what cities are about, is, is achieving the right balance of, you know, neighborly, you know, neighborly nuisances and rights. We do this all the time. And the challenge here is that we don't have the flexibility or the certainty around our authority that we have in all those other areas. I mean, I, I am fully supportive of, I mean, this has been a heart-wrenching issue, not just this one, but the dispensary one as well. I know the value of this as a medicine. I've been in the room when patients have taken it. I know, I have plenty of friends and others who rely on medical marijuana as medicine. I get it. And the dispensary debate that we had was wrenching because we, this council stepped out against all expectations, said, "We think we can solve this." You know, "Other jurisdictions are implementing bans and moratoriums and we're going to, we're going to make an attempt at it." You know, "If somebody can solve it, it's going to be West Sacramento because we're just going to roll up our sleeves and do the pragmatic thing." And we ran into a buzzsaw because we knew we could, we could figure out some reasonable regulations like we do for everything else. We put together a package of, you know, ideas to do that and we put our best thinking hats from the police department and the planning department and everywhere else, "Let's just come up with a reasonable approach." We did and the advocate said, "Well, if you do that, we're going to sue you." You know, "If you do that, if you do that piece, we will sue you. If you do that piece, we will sue you. If you do that piece, we will sue you." Because they didn't want any precedent being set that there wasn't an unrestricted at all times right to dispense marijuana without any restrictions, that it was essentially a religious issue, not a land use regulation issue. And we couldn't deal with that. And so after investing a huge amount of staff time and money on attorneys and analysis, we ended up with nothing. We ended up having the same moratorium on dispensaries that everyone else had and then an ultimate ban on dispensaries. Huge disappointment to me personally is trying to solve, you know, it was one of the folks here who said, "Let's try to solve this problem." And a big lesson learned around what was really possible. And I, and, and this is the same situation in many, many ways. Because to me, it is obvious as a land use issue, so well, let's regulate the number so that somebody shouldn't have 15 plants and let's regulate how close it is to the property line. Maybe we regulate parts of the growing season. It's just not that complicated. I mean, we have a debate about it, people will disagree about the specifics, but we would get to an answer. But we already know from prior testimony right before us that those same organizations have already said they will litigate. We, this is not the city of LA. It's not the city of San Francisco. We do not have the capacity, we don't have the resources to be the test case before the United States Supreme Court or the state Supreme Court. So we cannot, as much as I would like to be on the cutting edge of this and developing the latest ordinances, hoping, you know, that it all works out, we don't have the ability to do that. And so I'm actually, you know, probably on the fundamentals of this issue, like the actual use of marijuana. I'm the farthest from Mr. Kristof as anybody on this council, but on this issue, I actually think he's right. There's no point in, this is not a question of staff workload. If we just work a little bit harder, we'll come up with the answer? Yeah, we will, but it's still not going to answer the question of what do we do about this fundamental problem and mismatch between state and federal law? And the legal position of the statewide advocacy organization is that any restriction whatsoever is a violation of the Constitution under, under Proposition 215. You know, any restriction of anything, anytime, anywhere is, is going to subject you to litigation under Proposition 215. As long as that's their position, we cannot act. And the, you know, the notions of creating like a community garden or something like that puts us in a, in a worse legal position because then not only are we permitting the growing of marijuana, we are actively engaged as a partner in the line of production of marijuana, which, you know, is still a regulated narcotic under the federal government. We cannot do that. We cannot expose the citizens of this city to that kind of legal and financial liability. So we're in, we are stuck between a rock and a hard place and we cannot move that rock any faster than the state or the federal government or the courts resolving it. And, and so we can set an earlier date than 22 months on the hope that something will happen maybe in October from a court or maybe the Obama administration in response to Washington and Colorado will, and the Congress will finally say, "Look, we need to do something here. We need to make, we need to rationalize federal drug and medicine policy in some way to deal with this issue." Maybe they will, but there's no, there's no reason to expect that that's going to happen on a timeframe that's different than this. So I, I am, I'm fine with doing it, but I don't, but I personally don't, I'm not supportive of pushing one of our other priorities aside to rush the staff's work on it when what the real critical path point that's preventing us from getting into a solution isn't our own work. It is our legal exposure under these conflicting state and federal rules that are even more ambiguous post-Washington and Colorado. I'm hopeful Washington and Colorado will push the, push this to a, to, to a better solution on both the dispensing and the growing side, but we're not there yet. And there's no point in pretending that, that, that we are. So I'm, I'm supportive of the 22 months that the staff has proposed, as Mr. Kristof said. I'd, I'd be fine with a different, with a different number of months, but, but, but really, but with the expectation that that's just, that, that we're not the driving force and we shouldn't be, like we did with the dispensaries, investing a lot of staff time and resources to move an issue that we cannot control, that we, that we can't affect even in terms of the ultimate fiscal and legal liability that we'd be putting on our, on ourselves and on our citizens. So. Protamila Desma? Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your, your perspective on it and from the 22-month extension as the maximum amount, you know, I, I guess what I'm, what I am, we, we need to have some, some certainty whether it's knowing this will come back in November. And I, I, I understand your point. My, my, and you, you probably express, expressed what I'm getting at is that we could wait around 52 months and we're still won't have answers. And what I'm trying to get at is at some point, we need to, as a, as a body, kind of decide one way or the other and, and, and be able to, to move forward with the decision. What it looks like, I, I don't know and, and, you know, we're going to take our cue from what others are doing, but I, I think we just need to have a stake in the ground. I, I would be supportive if we go out 22 months, the maximum, and, and say a gen, item on this as a check-in on where we are in this work comes in November. Because if we're, if we're still 24 months away, it's not in the court system, if it's not, then you know what? We, as a, as a city council, we, we, you know, despite, you know, the folks will disagree with us and, you know, they deserve an answer and a decision and, and we need to still move forward. I, I agree with all the points you made and my point is, is this, that we owe the, we owe our constituents, whether they're opposed to this or are supportive of this, we need to move forward one way or the other. I don't want to be one of those communities who languishes in this for a long period of time. The 22 months just has that stigma, we're just going to wallow in this for a while. And I'm, I'm not willing to do that as a body. So if it's that sort of, that's, that sort of working arrangement, I think that's what I'd be looking for.
Viegas?
Yeah, so this, because it's urgency in nature, it requires a forfeit. Is that still the case for this as well? The original one did.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Ledesma. I mean, I, I guess part of it for me is I want to keep it on the radar. I don't know what the solution is. I don't think anybody does. You're right, there's a series of things that are going to happen, potentially that could happen, that could affect the outcome or whatever ordinance we come to draft. I don't know whether or not we have the resources and whether or not, as it compares in January, as we discuss our, our priorities, whether or not it even compares compared to what some other stuff we're trying to deal with, some pretty heavy stuff that we're trying to lift. So, but I do want to keep it on the radar. And if, if in some fashion, we need to either formalize the 10 months, but allow us the 22, I don't know what that looks like, but I, but I am interested in keeping it on the radar because I do think it's important enough to continue to check in on it, whether we have final solutions or not. I think we, and I think as the mayor has indicated, I mean, we, we, there are so many other, you know, other forces that are factoring into our, our, our policy considerations here. It makes it very difficult.
Well, let me take a crack at it. And I get, would we, I guess, would the council support the adoption of ordinance 13-1 as it is written with 22 months and 15 days, provided we add a provision that we will have a update in November as to where we are? Does that satisfy, I guess that's what, 10 months, 15 days? Is that right, Charlene?
Yes. Yeah, we could do that or we could, we could possibly bring you something, an update in June. We could split the difference and kind of set a goal of every five months, we bring you an update.
Well, my concern is I need to make, I think we need to make sure that we have the court system hear what's going on and, and, and take the lead as, in essence, from, I know there are a number of cases that have been filed in Los Angeles County. And so to get a, a read, I guess, is probably not going to be in June. That's why I sort of think the 10 month and 15 days would, the November date.
So that would be by November 25th.
There are actually a couple of cases before the California Supreme Court that will give us some guidance, but I don't have any real give us some guidance, but I don't have any real expectation that those will come out this summer. It's likely to be, could be another year, could be more than a year before we really get. And that may only be the beginning of that.
That's why I think the 22 months is, you know, it, it's probably appropriate, but at, at the same time, you know, we wanna, if something comes up sooner than that, well, then, let's, like you say, we've, we've gotta tackle the issue. We've gotta take it on. And so, we can see in 10 months what's really being out there.
Well, so, it seems like there could be one other path, which is that if, I mean, the, the legislature in SB 420 did promulgate some, some framework for regulation. It took, it did so from the stance of the advocates, essentially, which was, "Oh, gosh, we don't want cities to do this, 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 or that. And so, let's, let's stop cities from doing any of these regulatory approaches all, you know, the sum total, which makes it very difficult to have any reasonable regulation." And so, what they did not foresee is that cities would say, "Okay, we're not, we, we can't live in that environment, so we're gonna adopt these moratoriums." So, it, you know, it could, the legislature, if the advocacy community for medical marijuana and the legislature were to, you know, to agree to, "Let's revise SB 420 to affirmatively allow for," and the advocacy community would have to agree not to litigate it, but to affirmatively allow for cities to do reasonable regulations, or to just let us regulate like we regulate anything else, then that would solve it with the, without, without a resolution necessarily to the whole federal drug problem. And, and that could, you know, if we, if, and, and we, perhaps we should be communicating that with the, you know, with the governor and our own, and our own legislative delegation. I mean, that's, that's a potential, you know, other, other, you know, path, in which case we would probably wanna have an update in August or September, so we would know, you know, has the legislature, has the legislature done anything that would allow us to, 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 to craft a responsible local ordinance?
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I'd still leave the, the timeframe missing, but the check-in point, instead of being in November, could be, in, under that, under that scenario, could be early, because we would know, we would know by, by August or September, at least if the legislature's passed it. We wouldn't necessarily know if the governor was signing it, but that would be a pretty strong signal. Because the governor has previously indicated an interest in doing something on this issue, but the legislature's been only sending him, you know, proposals that are, that are headed in the opposite direction.
I, I'm fine. I, I mean, I, I think what I'm hearing is that there, there are other opportunities. I think what, what, what we're giving staff direction on possible paths to take through the 22 months. So, my only point is, is that we should, we should have some action plans, some, some movement on this policy issue, and have a check-in by November. If something happens in August, so be it. But we, as a body, should, should say, "You know what? We need to revisit this, get an update on this in, in November of 2013. See where we are. Are we any closer to making a sound policy decision, or is this still being mired by all the outside forces that are preventing us from doing that?" And again, I think we just owe it to our constituents to be able to be, have some clarity around our action. Not, I, I, I'm not interested in sort of, other than maybe occasional memos, or if there's significant progress on this by, by the means that the mayor has outlined, then certainly I'd be interested in having a workshop or an understanding on this that's heard it by the public, because that would be in and of itself. And I think it's a, it's a, it's a terrific strategy to take, because it would put us at the forefront of sort of how we might be able to regulate this going forward. But again, I'm, I'm just after a very simple thing, which is, let's just get to follow those paths. Let's get to November and find, find out where we are and move forward.
So, moved with that 22 months with, I make the motion, we adopt Ordinance 13-1, extending the temporary moratorium up to 22 months and 15 days, and that we also, as an amendment to that, we have a staff report or an update on this issue in November of 2013?
Can I make a suggestion?
No later than?
If I make a suggestion, if you adopt the ordinance, you could make, as part of your motion, a direction to staff to return no later than November 2013 with an update, rather than, rather than putting it into the ordinance itself.
Thank you. Thank you for the suggestion. So, my, my motion is as our city attorney has stated.
Including the sequel provision.
Thank you. All right. Is there a second?
Can I, can I just make a comment, even a friendly amendment? So, I guess for me, what would be helpful is to see what it is we're waiting for, because I'm not sure what we're waiting for, or what those sort of critical components are to what a staff report would look like before November. So, if there are things we're waiting for, I don't know what they are, if they're court cases, if there are other policy considerations that we should be tracking, identifying what those are, certainly before November, I'd wanna know, I mean, what are the things that we're anticipating, waiting for, expecting, or doing?
I think Charlene and I could give you a put together.
Yeah, she mentioned June, so that, so, so, something well before November would help me feel comfortable as we move to November for that reconsideration, as a friendly amendment to your motion.
So, you're, you're asking for additional information?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be helpful to have some sense of what it is we're expecting to hear. I mean, in the next 12 months, a lot is gonna happen, presumably, and so, whatever those things are, would be helpful for me to know, at least, to know that we're waiting for a resolution or a conclusion, and maybe there's nothing. But if, if there are things that we're waiting for, because we've talked about it a lot, but talked around it a lot today in terms of the court cases, and other information that may surface that would be helpful for us to know, I, I would, I would like to know what that is, what we're looking for, or what we're expecting, or what can happen that might be helpful.
For me personally, there's any number of things that could happen, none of which I think are likely to happen in the next 12 months. I don't think it's gonna be a big year. I mean, it, it, all the stars seem to be for the federal government to keep procrastinating on this issue as long as possible. But if the federal government were to, to develop an actual policy on either marijuana generally, or on, or on, on medical marijuana, that would be one of those triggering, triggering points. So, we would no longer be in direct conflict between state and federal law on even possession and growing and all the other, those issues. If the state government were to change the rules on growing to allow us to, to, to be clear about what our regulatory authority was in a way that was consistent with what, how we would, how we would choose to develop an ordinance if we, if we could. If the courts were to clarify the con, those, the conflicts between the two, you know, by, by virtue of hearing cases from other, from other cities, so that the, some of the issues that we could, that we could potentially be subjected to litigation for in our ordinance, if those were settled by other litigation, then they're not gonna be issues that would be problematic for us. Those are, those are at least three examples of the sorts of things, none of which we, I mean, I, I, we can count on happening, but those are the kinds of things, at least, that would, that would give us a much clearer path that we could act.
Yeah.
Yeah. On a permanent, on a, hopefully a permanent, workable, thoughtful ordinance that promotes safe access. So, I'm not sure where that leaves my motion, and did you, was there?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what that is. I mean, I guess if there are things that we are tracking, or if there are things that would be helpful to know, like I said, I don't know what those are, but I, I'd like to know what it is we're waiting for, if we're waiting for certain things to happen.
I think the mayor has articulated the sorts of things, but if you'd like a brief summary of what the significant cases are that are before the California Supreme Court, and what kind of guidance we think we're gonna get from those, that's something we could do. On the, on the other side, away from legislation and, and court cases, are the information that Charlene's waiting for concerning costs, criminal statistics, those kinds of pieces of information. So, I think we're waiting for a couple of different things. I think the mayor is correct, that for you to be able to get to a resolution that is, has a relatively low risk of being litigated, you need guidance. You need federal and state guidance, either from the courts or from the, from the government, or from the legislative branch. But, but we can, we can provide a short piece for the council that summarizes what we, the sorts of pieces of information that we're looking for, if that would help.
I think any information would be helpful. I mean, I, I mean, just as we progress through the year, I mean, certainly, you know, we get information on, on other policy issues through the publications we receive as council members. Really do I see kind of, you see, having some policy brief would be helpful, and I'm not sure there's any timeframe on it, but doesn't change the, our action tonight. All right. So, there's, we saw the motion pending, waiting for a second. There is one. Chris is, yes.
I'll say.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This is a forfeit's vote, so ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council member Kristoff?
Yeah.
Council member Villegas?
Yes.
Council member Johannison?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Ledesma?
Yes.
Mayor Cabaldin?
Yes. So, that motion carries. A vote of 5 to 0. Another unsatisfying marijuana discussion for everyone. I do, I would like to do the communication with our, with the state government piece. We described if there's no objection to doing that, we could, the communication to the state, our state legislators around this issue that we described during the session, if we could, if there's no objection to doing that, I, I would like to, you know, transmit a, a letter to our legislators, just identifying this issue that we're facing and how they might be able to, yeah, seeking some assistance. Okay, item eight is consideration of approval of a contract for professional services with Dock and Engineering to design the Pioneer Bluff Bridge project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to provide you with a brief overview on what the initial South River Road Bridge and Village Parkway Extension Project included, and now the new Pioneer Bluff Bridge Project. Dock and Engineering prepared the initial design and environmental analysis for the South River Road Bridge and Village Parkway Extension Project that I have up here on the screen. The design included widening South River Road to three lanes, a new bridge over the Barge Canal that included decorative sails and pedestrian overlooks, a new four-lane Village Parkway from the new bridge to the, to Stone Gate Drive, and it included landscaping and four new signalized intersections, as you can see up there. The project design was halted and put on the shelf in 2008 due to the downturn in development and the economy. And that particular project was, the construction cost for that project was estimated approximately $24 million. The Pioneer Bluff Bridge Project is essentially a scaled-back version of the original bridge that removes the South River Road expansion, the Village Parkway Extension, and the large sails and pedestrian overlooks on the bridge, and some minor alignment adjustments. The project includes a new four-lane bridge over the Barge Canal that will be temporarily striped to two lanes to conform to the existing roadway on each side of the canal, and a new intersection at 15th Street, a signalized intersection at 15th Street and South River Road. The project is also being designed to accommodate streetcars, future streetcars. Construction for this project is estimated at approximately $9.6 million. This project is an important circulation element that's identified in the city's general plan and also the capital improvement program. As you can see from the project schedule that's up there, we have many milestones to meet in a very short period of time. We have less than six months to go put together all our geotechnical, our traffic, get right-of-way clearance, utilities as well, which falls within right-of-way when you have state funds on the project. And what we're shooting for is to get 100% design by May and go to the CTC for the allocation of funds in June In November 2012, Dock and Engineering was issued a small, was issued a small contract in the amount of $49,200 to begin design and the environmental analysis for this project. It was an initial setup contract that was necessary to keep the project on schedule, pending the, the CTC, the California Transportation Commission's decision whether or not to redirect the $9.67 million in trade corridor improvement funds to this project. In order to take advantage of the previous work done by Dock and Engineering and meet the grant deadlines, staff recommends approval of a professional service contract with Dock and Engineering to complete the design, the right-of-way, environmental analysis, and regulatory permitting for the Pioneer Bluff Bridge Project. And with that, that includes our short presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, Jay, when this bridge is completed, will it connect to Village Parkway?
No, it won't. Village Parkway, what it's gonna do is it's gonna connect on the north side of the road at the, the end of the cul-de-sac, that South River Road, right near the wastewater treatment plant. The bridge will go over the canal, and it'll tie into that existing South River Road on the south side of the canal.
Okay. Does this bridge connect to Jefferson Boulevard via South River Road?
By South River Road, yes, it would.
Is there a way to get the people, especially that live on Stone Gate, or Lake Washington Boulevard, or all of those, that whole subdivision that we have on the other side of the Barge Canal now, is there a way to get those folks access to the bridge without having to go to Jefferson Boulevard?
I don't believe so. No.
I don't think so either.
No. That's correct.
Okay. I mean, I, you know, I'm in favor of the project, but at the same time, I don't want it to be deemed a bridge to nowhere.
Right.
And South River Road, especially the eastern part of it, is gonna have a whole different configuration after we do all of the levy work and all of the other things. And at the same time, you probably really don't want traffic, especially a heavy load of traffic, going from London to South River Road to get to the bridge, or whatever it may be.
Right.
So, I mean, I think we need to put our thinking caps on, on how to get that whole subdivision, and then the other subdivisions that are going to eventually come in, that are on the east side of Jefferson Boulevard, to use that bridge, because it'll be, this will be a great asset for those folks if we can get them access there.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, yes. Don't have a solution for it, but.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're stuck in this problem for a good reason, which is that we, we're, we're able to capture money that we would have lost, that, you know, the, the West Sacramento got from the statewide voter-approved infrastructure bonds. We would have lost this money if, if our staff frankly hadn't come up with a, put together a bunch of crazy ideas, including this one, as part of a package, and taken it to the state, and pulled a rabbit out of the hat, and gotten, got, got approval to do this. But it was done as part of a rail project. The bridge, I mean, the bridge is a component of an overall project that supports rail movement in the city. It wasn't funded, but it wasn't, the funding wasn't approved by the state as a project to, to connect Southport, you know, home residences to the rest of the city, really. So, I mean, it, it's a, it's a great gift, essentially, that we have these resources to move forward on a bridge that we didn't have a funding source for at all. But it, it will, we need to be prepared for the issues that Mr. Kristoff has raised. I, I mean, I think, it just means by December of 2014, by, by the time the bridge is constructed, we better know how we're going to construct Village Parkway. I mean, obviously, we won't have it done then, but we need to, we, we need to be able to answer that question of how is that going, how's that connection gonna get made, because the bridge's utility as a, as a, as a, as a, as a bridge for cars is gonna, and for bikes and everybody else is gonna be fairly limited without the bikes and everybody else is going to be fairly limited without the Village Parkway connection. So we, we'll need to be, we'll need to be able to answer that question by that point. What is, what, when, and what was the plan for this to occur? But, and, but then the other question, so in the interim, what are, have we, have we had the opportunity to do any of the modeling on what, you know, what happens at the turn, you know, at the South River Road, Jefferson turn in the evening? If people come from, you know, downtown Sacramento from the freeway, they come down South River Road?
Uh-huh.
I mean, down, yeah, down South River Road, get to the new, the perpendicular South River Road, turn right, and then go to Jefferson, and then everybody wants to get back onto Jefferson again, what happens at that intersection?
It's, it is, it's being evaluated right now. It's part of the, like I said, very tight, tight schedule.
It's part of our evaluation. It does not sound pretty, so, so, I mean, it's not, it's, it's terrific that we're, that we have this problem to deal with, but we do need to deal, we need to anticipate those, those sorts of issues, and I know the team is working on that, and that's not what, this item is about, actually building the bridge, and, but because of the expedited process that was needed in order to get approval for this, we actually never saw the, this before, before council going forward and doing this really in any, in any extensive way previously, anyway. So it's the first time we're seeing this with the, with the full diagram, so, just to reinforce, we need, we need to be ready both for the, you know, the community's understanding about how this is going to, the, how this will solve many of the problem, of the challenges and problems that we have with circulation in Southport, not by itself, but when the other improvements are constructed, and when and, when and how we're going to do that, but also make sure we're, we're thinking very carefully about what the interim impacts are going to be and how we might address, address those, I think is going to be, be really critical. Normally, I would have major concerns about the award to Dockin that's being sort of bootstrapped on top of the city manager's award to Dockin, which was itself bootstrapped on the Dockin work on, that we did approve, I think as a part of a regular competitive process for the, for the design of the original alignment, but I understand the, the, the needs for, the need on the timing, why that needed to happen in that way, and at least it was bootstrapped off of one that had gone through the regular process the first time through, the first time around, so.
And we did stop Dockin early in the process, in their design, to where we actually had probably about a million dollars left in their contract that we did not use, so.
Okay. All right, Mr. Johannison?
Yeah, I, I think I would also just chime in on the traffic issue that we'll need to take a look at. Right now, the, did you say there's going to be, I look at signalization on South River Road and 15th?
Yeah, signalization at 15th and South River Road, that's correct.
Yeah, because right now, you've got a lot of tanker trucks that are going up and down there, and you have people, I think, who are kind of dividing up, either getting on 50 through South River Road, or, so I'm not seeing a real advantage to the way it would be configured to cut through South River Road and go that route, because it's, South River Road is pretty small at that point, and we're always... But still, it will, we've, we've gone to great extents to have synchronization along Jefferson with the brain that we've installed in the sensors, so you're going to have an intersection that's either going to trip that all the time at certain times of night, and it's also going north on Jefferson and turning right on South River Road to use that bridge. That's even going to create, I think, problems, so all that will probably need to be looked at, and I imagine it's going to be, and what you're going to be doing with this.
River traffic, and also, yes, that's correct.
All right.
Another component, since Mr. Johannison was the one talking, is that the folks coming from the Village Parkway corridor, from Riva, from Stonegate, from those neighborhoods, will have an incentive, you know, just a natural traffic incentive, to not get on Jefferson and to cut through right by Mr. Johannison's, you know, house. I mean, it will be, it'll be, I mean, and, and that sort of cut-through impact is, you know, is exactly the sort of thing we can't, I mean, they, that neighborhood cannot, cannot and doesn't, and we need to make sure we're protecting them from, from having that kind of an impact, whether, whether or not Mr. Johannison...
Well, one of the, there's two other things. There's a light at Stone, and then there'll be a light, I'm pretty sure, at South River Road. That leaves for a very small window, just only a number of cars can stack up in that distance. So I think that's an issue that'll need to be looked at. And then the other issue that'll be, need to be looked at, and that is, is the people from Village Parkway trying to connect to South River Road, to get on South River Road and then go north, will be an issue because there will be some flood control issues on the levy itself, and so that's going to, I think that'll be a pretty delicate balance to be made there on how traffic is taken there. Maybe we need to drop South River Road off the levy. I don't know what it'll all be, what it'll end up being, but I think that those are issues that need, that the traffic engineers and the traffic people will, and the planning people will really need to take a very, very close look at.
Quick look.
Not a quick look.
No, I know. If I may? Yeah. Thank you. Just, first of all, kudos to the staff for putting this package together and getting, you know, coming up with these funds, and, and this was a, you know, the mayor always pokes at me that I'm the former planning commissioner up here, but this bridge has been contemplated. I saw the bridge renderings with the sails, and we weighed in on that six years ago, whenever that was.
Yeah, but you had ingresses and egresses to the bridge.
We did. The lines are still there where the road's supposed to be, and we're, I, I think that's, you know, that is the good news. I think we've, there, there's, there was thought to kind of how this would all put together, and this was always a critical piece. So, you know, I, I, you know, I, I will also echo what they've said, is that there needs to be a couple of, additional bullets on your schedule about traffic mitigation, coming back to us, because I think we've also been burned by previous situations where roads like Marshall that weren't ready to be used by, we did not want to be used by the residents in Bridgeway Island were, were, yeah, they railed off, and people weren't asked not to use them, and they miraculously chains would be broken and the view opened up the next day, or, we just don't want those situations. And, and there were signals put in on Jefferson, anyway, we can go back in history, but I think looking forward, we can learn from the lessons of the past and what we don't want. And so I think we have, if we can build that in, and it's already in there, it sounds like, but we, just the council or however we want to go about it can weigh in to make sure we plan this, and more importantly, as the mayor pointed out, we need to have that plan about how we're going to get better access to that, because, you know, I'm in the neighborhood, Councilmember Johannison's in that neighborhood, it could be a real impact, or it could be a real benefit, and so we want it to be the latter, not the one. So, that's all. Further discussion? Is there a motion then on item eight? It's been moved by Mr. Villegas, and seconded by Mr. Kristoff. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. Item nine is presentation of discussion regarding the Local Government Commission Infill Streamlining Program grant for the master planning of the Grand Gateway Project
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This evening, I'm going to be giving you a brief presentation on some master planning efforts that the city has been undertaking, that's been funded by the Infill Streamlining Program. And after the presentation, Charlene and I would respectfully request that the council provide us with some direction and comment on our efforts today, and give us some direction as we move forward in preparing this document. The program that we received the grant money from was funded by SECOG and the local air district in 2010, and the purpose of this grant fund was to allow local jurisdictions with the technical assistance that's needed to meet the state and federal regulations that relate to air quality, and most specifically meet the requirements under SB 375, the California Community Sustainable and Climate Control Act that was passed in 2008. The infill streamlining program was given over to the Local Government Commission to be implemented, and they act as sort of the oversight body and are contractually obligated to work with the city and a pre-selected set of consultants to deliver this technical assistance. The grant objectives and the scope of work are therefore aligned with these objectives and are primarily focused on developing master planning efforts in infill areas that reduce vehicle miles traveled and promote transit-oriented development. Our unique infill project, which the staff has nicknamed the Grand Gateway, is at the intersection of three council priority planning areas, the Washington neighborhood, which you see in blue, the Bridge District neighborhood in yellow, and then the east end of the West Capitol Avenue corridor and City Civic Senator in the light purple. It's approximately a 10-acre publicly-owned site. It does have some uses that have been planned and committed with a proficiency obligation, but we've selected Opticos to work through those issues with us and help us with this master planning effort, and the scope will ultimately result in a planned development overlay document that will provide consistency amongst these three sort of conflicting plans that affect each one of these three parcels. In doing so, we need to go back to the original documents to make sure that we're making sure that we're carrying forward these guiding principles, and this is a diagram that was prepared by Opticos that seeks to visualize some of those planning concepts. So, for example, the fans that you see sort of pointing towards the end of West Capitol Avenue, that star shape, and then the fan that's pointing towards the intersection of Tower Bridge Gateway and Garden are meant to represent the civic significance corridors, the, the concepts that talk about having visual areas of interest and, and terminating West Capitol Avenue that occur in the existing plans. The arrows that you see both in yellow and black are meant to comment on connectivity and access points, and letting people know that they've arrived and dealing with circulation. And then the sort of purple-blue star is meant to represent the challenges with constructing on the experience site. Since it's so far back removed from Tower Bridge Gateway, and it's got a sort of a legacy of West Capitol Avenue on it, Opticos felt that it was important to look at bringing that site forward and how the Tower Court site and the Experience site could work together. Based on the research and some of the site visits that Opticos did, they came up with four planning objectives that they felt were necessary, that needed to be addressed in this planned overlay document, and some of the analysis that was done was included in the initial analysis memo that was attached to the staff report. The framework plans, which were also included in the staff report, there are three of them, sought to introduce a new circulation and open space scenarios, and also define appropriately-sized blocks for development. This evening, I'm going to be presenting the foundational concepts that came from this, these frameworks, and those are development density that will occur on each one of those blocks, the land use and frontage types that were contemplated for each of those blocks, and, excuse me, and renderings that show what that, those spaces may look and feel like from both aerial and then a street-level perspective. We recognize that there are some real estate challenges with these sites in light of the fact that some of them are successor agency properties, and to that end, it may, looking forward, who the developer will be, be a bit of a challenge. In that end, it also makes it difficult to understand what the market will be for these sites, and so we're looking to maximize the utility and the flexibility of this document and still meet those objectives of TOD, increased density on the site, and consistency with the three plans. What we discovered when we were trying to look at the intensity of development that would occur on these proposed blocks was that parking was really the trigger for whether or not we were going to reach a certain density, and to that end, you see, we have high and low density, and the triggering point is whether we have surface parking and on-street parking as the sole, sole provider for the parking, or if we're introducing structured Here is an example of a live-work unit. Opticos pulled some examples from real, live buildings to give us a sense of what we might see with some of these development scenarios, and this is your standard three-story, and you can see it's recommending retail, ground floor, served with parking at an angle, surface parking, in contrast to a more intense use, like a mixed-use development, which may have a surface parking lot in the back, served by a small, like, alleyway, or scaled even further, a more intense mixed-use development that may actually wrap in a standalone parking structure. One of the things that Opticos recognized was that we need to have the ability to be responsive to the market, and as such, they wanted to stay away from having ground-floor uses that couldn't be used as residential, and then eventually evolve into commercial use. And so a primary portion of their work is going to be focusing on that ground-floor level frontage that will create an inviting residential opportunity, and then, as you can see here, with the dual doors and the planting area that could eventually be removed, and the doors could be painted to look more like an office or suite-type opportunity. There are two types of townhomes that Opticos envisioned could potentially go on the site, whether we do low intensity or high intensity. This is the more standard residential townhome. It will always have the character of residential, and it will likely be served by some off-public street alleyway circulation with tuck-under or garage parking. In contrast to these types of townhomes that could eventually convert to retail, no, excuse me, to office uses on the bottom, and that would likely have some tuck-under parking or podium parking, or may even wrap a small structured parking. So the three framework plans that these concepts evolved into, this is our first example. This plan has an oval park that's about 60% of the size of the similarly-shaped oval park in the Bridge District. It's contemplating, because they want to have this be an active use, Opticos has suggested that this area, this area, and this corner be primarily commercial at its onset, and that the building frontage types that are recommended seek to encourage that use, while this seam and this edge have flexible space that can have, that accommodate residential, but then eventually can be converted, converted to commercial in the event that there is demand. And then the back, and then this area back here that's got green space relief, be primarily This is a rendering that shows what that experience would be like looking from someone traveling this way. Excuse me. This is option B. Option B has, looks to sort of create a very large block, and we see our first large parking structure that could be potentially wrapped, so this would be like the large-intensity mixed-use example that they had shown us, with a plaza here creating that visual interest that they anticipated coming off West Capitol Avenue. This would be commercial as well as all of this, and then we see again that flex space being reintroduced here and here, and then a large townhome sort of residential unit occurring back here, and this being a sort of hidden jewel of that arrival point concept that they were referring to as it relates to West Capitol Avenue.
So Katie, is that under option B, that parking structure, so that would that only provide parking for that immediate area, or is it, would that be sized to accommodate other events on the riverfront, or?
We're at the point right now that I think if council wanted it to be one way or the other, we could incorporate that in. And so the rendering that you're going to see next is going to be from the viewpoint of looking that way. And you can see the large plaza over here, and the ground floor retail with the mixed-use above. And this... And this is our final option. This option is the only option that cuts off vehicular traffic in the West Capitol Corridor, and it seeks to recapture that traffic and make it a pedestrian and bicycle route. And that's where this view corridor comes from, ending on a plaza. And this parking structure back here would be primarily to serve residential here and along the seam. Then we have commercial here and here. And then, in recognition that this space may convert over time to include parking or may be a site for an outdoor market, this has become recommended as being flex space to account for that. And the rendering that you're going to see is going to be of the plaza, looking down the view corridor towards the West Capitol Avenue that's now just pedestrian and bicycles So, the last attachment to your staff report was a memo that was prepared by our consultant Opticos that was a summary of the comments that we received at the, excuse me, December 6th Planning Commission meeting from the council and the planning commissioners, as well as some comments that they received from staff as staff initially reviewed their recommendations. These are some general observations that sort of summarize at a high level some of those comments, as well as sort of, we hope to be something we can receive in addition to anything else that the council members have comments or direction related to. And I would like to finally say that we're not looking for the council to select a preferred alternative this evening. We would like the council to do that in March if it's possible for one to ultimately rise to being the preferred, although we can accommodate all three of them sort of continuing at the same level. We are going back to the planning commission once we receive the draft document to ask for a recommendation related to that draft document, and we'll be back in front of the council sometime in late February, March, asking for a workshop related to this document and then ultimately approval before April as the grant deadline prevents us from going out any further. That concludes my presentation, and Charlene and I are available if you have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Mr. Johannesen.
Thank you, Mr. Hert. Yeah, I just want to get in more detail on the streetcar interface here because this, your one diagram basically says that this entire project is within a five-minute walk, which is really the sweet spot for streetcar and how you finance these things. So, to me, that would dictate it's got to be maximum-maximum density in terms of people living there, potential people using the streetcar, potential funding sources for a streetcar line. And secondly, you had one diagram there where you had basically a block-type unit, and you had an interior parking lot, which to me makes no sense at all, particularly when you consider that it would be streetcars served. It would seem more appropriate to have a courtyard to make it actually, you know, more of a block style with a courtyard type, to give more interest in that particular unit rather than people looking out their back window and looking at a parking lot. Because I think in this case, you know, if all goes well, then we'll have a streetcar. That's the primary line there, that we really should be looking at, you know, maximum density, life at the street level, commercial that's based on streetcar stops, that type of stuff, and then have the view on top of that. So, I know that the planning commission, I think they like option A, but I kind of think...
They did, they liked option A, yes.
Yeah, so it's, I'm going more toward one of the other options that has more higher density, that really utilizes the streetcar and then has the visual activity at the ground level, because you'll have a lot of people walking, you have railies field there. So, I mean, to me, C, it sounded like a better idea, plus trying to really reduce the parking in there if we can to courtyards and things that are more walking urban-type design.
Thank you.
Mayor Portemlo Desma.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing us. And I may ask, it's not in my staff report, some of the nicer renderings you have on the slideshow versus the ones that are on in the staff report, it's the ones I'm seeing. But I sort of agree with Councilmember Johannesen on sort of the orientation of C versus A. You know, let me ask a question first. The West Capitol, the West Capitol where we're contemplating either continuing vehicular traffic or to a walk corridor or whatever, what's contemplated to go outside of the boundary area and this other side of, I mean, we have railies over there. I think there's, we have two buildings and, you know, I don't think there's other...
Welcome Grove.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I apologize, I'm going to have to talk spatially without having a diagram, so...
It's okay.
No, I want to answer his question as thoroughly as I can. I'll point. So, you have Welcome Grove, and then you have the railies annex. One of the things that Opticos considered and they were familiar with was the potential for the West Side rail relocation to occur and this line to go away. And what you see with this option is a recognition that this will become reclaimable.
Okay.
And that the potential for a vehicular, an additional vehicular path to kind of go like that and reconnect back into the Washington neighborhood because their observation, as you'll see in one of the memos, was that there's a lack of connectivity to the Washington neighborhood.
That was going to be my observation.
So, this option sought to, with a long-term plan, eliminate what they considered to be a weak connection and perhaps establish a better north-south connection instead of keeping an east-west connection, which they felt already existed with Tower Bridge Gateway. And so, this option sort of cuts that off for a time period in anticipation of this being reclaimed.
And thank you, because it sort of has, obviously there is a natural barrier there. And what I was thinking is that there is that option, although I like it because the orientation from the streetcar perspective, but it still creates a barrier despite the backside of it being going nowhere. So, I'm glad they're thinking about that, and just, that's probably what we need to think about more, because if this were to be built today, 10 years from now, or whatever it is, some planning commission and some city council is going to look at that, go, what were we thinking cutting that off? So, we just lost all sorts of potential. So, I'm glad that they're thinking about that. You know, and I do agree with the sort of, you know, I've always, as we move forward on West Capitol Avenue, it is so important that we get it right and steer more towards where maybe we're not comfortable going. And I say that because maybe in option A, we're still sticking to the West Capitol paradigm. We're thinking it's still there and we need to kind of keep that road and vehicular traffic. And, you know, when I was listening to Mr. Johannesen, it occurred to me, I thought of, you know, being in Boston and taking the tea out to the Brookline neighborhood and just the total transit experience you get because there's, you know, shops and stores and you can get off the stops there and it's very, you know you're at a transit stop. And you know there's restaurants, cafes, and little shops and services, and then you can walk out and you're into the very dense neighborhoods. And within Brookline, it fans out, if you've ever been to that part. And that's what I always kind of waited on, when are we going to get like that? And so, the design, the opportunity this design exercise gives us and this provides is, you know, how can we steer more towards that? Because that's what we need to get to on West Capitol and in the Washington neighborhood. And in the Bridge District, of course, we're already planning for a streetcar. So, just my thoughts, I think that's, I'm kind of agreeing essentially with that Tower Bridge Gateway needs to be the entrance, but it'll be an area where there should be ground-level activity and so people get off, and that's where they can stop and then continue walking down West Capitol to get to the Capitol Bowl, wherever they're going, and move on their way. So, but anyway, so thanks, those are my comments.
Well, I, I started talking, so I'm just going to keep going. I agree with the comments. We do need to up the density, particularly what this grant was for, was for figuring out how to do stuff like that. But, I mean, particularly given the density, we already have it, Ironworks, which is low and which is happening at Tower Bridge Commons, which is significantly lower than we had hoped for, that we, you know, we can't, the pressure keeps coming to go lower and we can't, that's not sustainable environmentally, it's not sustainable economically, it's not sustainable for our infrastructure or our financing plans. So, on those that, particularly on pieces of property that we control, we need to be, you know, have high level of fidelity to what our land use vision has been. So, I absolutely agree, and certainly the streetcar ought to be the foundation of that. So, in that respect, I do like option, the feel of option C, and I know you're not asking us to pick one, but I wouldn't pick option C in part because I'm not sure, I mean, I get the idea of the orientation towards the Tower Bridge Gateway intersection, but I don't actually agree with it. I mean, as the construction under Tower Bridge Commons has gotten underway and the improvements to Tower Bridge Gateway are there, it's quite obvious now that I look at it that, why is nobody, why have we not planned a full-blown, essentially a full-blown Passau connection between our downtown and the waterfront along the alignment of West Capitol Avenue? It seems like an obvious one. And that ought to be, I mean, we already have that facility, we have the right-of-way. I mean, we're planning on building on it at Tower Bridge Commons. But, I mean, this notion that you would have an unbroken, not just a sidewalk on Tower Bridge Gateway, which is, you know, certainly better than we've had in the past, but that's just a sidewalk as opposed to a major sort of linear, linear park-style connecting connector between the waterfront and the downtown. I mean, this is, this portion of it, including the portion on the other side of the undercrossing, you wouldn't have to close it to, you wouldn't have to close that section to vehicular traffic, but you could still make it, it doesn't require as much capacity as it currently has for vehicular traffic, but you could close this part to vehicular traffic, but align it more towards West Capitol Avenue as opposed to coming to the corner of Tower Bridge Gateway and West Capitol Avenue, which looks like a great point if you were having a march or something, but you're not, there's nothing to go to there. Right, I mean, there might be a little bit of retail put stuck in a delta lane, there's never going to be retail at Ironworks because we didn't zone for it, and it will be, you know, into the, a lot of people will have to be reincarnated before there's retail at the Dharma Realm. So, that's, it's not really the ideal place to be directing pedestrian traffic. And so, whereas our downtown is. And so, to me, sort of the idea of option C makes sense, but maybe that's not the right destination point. The landing point maybe should be essentially at Capitol Bowl. But the idea of not having that be a vehicular through, I think, makes a lot of sense.
So, you think the plaza makes more sense where it's been located in option B?
Yeah, but with, but without pretending that you're still going to have a vehicular thing. So, thinking about an affirmative corridor that proceeds for non-vehicular purposes, I think makes a lot of sense. And I think, you know, for our planning document purposes, it does make sense to reference the Washington-specific plan. You know, if you're a resident of the Washington neighborhood, it doesn't really resonate to say that this project area, you know, crosses into the Washington neighborhood. That's purely an artifact of how the Washington-specific plan area got drawn, not a real sense of place to say that this little piece of parcel here is really part of Broderick or the old Washington area. As we go out and do community workshops and this sort of thing, I just, I think in terms of the language that we're using, it wouldn't feel authentic, you know? If you lived on, you know, on Third Street north of, north of F, and somebody would say, oh, yeah, this is going to, this is going to bring the Washington District together with the downtown. It's not, not really. I mean, it brings our planning area together, but not the actual places. But the orientation that you've been talking about, I think, helps to get us to that point over time.
Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah, when I looked at this, I mean, I sort of liked option A. And I think that what really needs to make, what we need to make sure we do is we need to connect West Capitol Avenue with Tower Bridge Commons and not block that off, so to speak, as C does. So, the Experience Site and the Tower Court Site, are they always separated by West Capitol Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. But, I mean, I still think that somehow or another we need to have that whole transition of West Capitol Avenue being a thoroughfare street all the way to the river. I, you know, so those would be the comments that I have.
Are you, do you mean for vehiculars, vehicular traffic?
For vehicular traffic, yeah.
Always prevail.
Just the other thing on the parking, the parking structure piece, I mean, we do need, I mean, we do need a parking structure. So, and there's no ideal place to put it because it's never an attractive part of, for itself. But for, both for the downtown and for the railies landing area and for the bridge, all these districts require additional structured parking. And so, the extent to, I mean, I did, I was, although, I mean, the surface parking lot I didn't like, but the notion of at least potentially this being a location for a city, you know, essentially a city operator or something like that, kind of parking structure, you know, thinking about a piece of property that we already own, some, does seem to make some sense. So, if there's a way to do that without destroying the land use objectives that we're trying to achieve there, I think it's worth, it's worth continuing to look at.
Yeah, that part is what I was going to add. I mean, I think if we're going to do it, certainly in an urban setting, I mean, the whole wrapping around, wrapping commercial residential around a large, you know, monolithic parking structure certainly makes sense. But so, I'm trying to capitalize on an overlay. I know we have done some studies, we spent significant amount of money trying to figure out what the parking needs would be if we were to urbanize the way we've envisioned with a large crowd events, and I think that's certainly to consider, so.
Other comments or discussion? Do you have enough preliminary comments and direction to proceed? Do we, are there other questions that you have of us that we haven't taken up?
No, I think we have sufficient information to move forward with a draft document, and we'll share council's comments with the consultants tomorrow when they bring in an admin draft of the draft document.
Can I just add one last thing? I have a hard time visualizing what that would look like, and this is such a critical intersection for us, to the extent possible, without a lot of expense. It would be helpful to have renderings that give you kind of a streetscape view of kind of what the different options look like, because the pictures were helpful, but it didn't give me a sense of what it would look like as we go through it. We've talked about this before, as we come in and out of that intersection, that's a critical, we only get one shot at it, so it would be helpful if they've got them.
At the intersection of Tower, this intersection here, Tower Bridge Gateway.
Exactly. What that looks like, what's the street view?
We will make that request to our consultants, although we are constrained by our budget.
I understand, I know.
So...
You've got some good stuff already, I just, maybe I should have tracked it differently. I thought we were going to have renderings available here, so it's fine.
We can respond in a council memo or newsletter if I have some additional information that I can share before our planned workshop.
Good enough, yep. Thanks, Katie.
And just one other thing, too, is we saw a rendering on Tower that somebody put together for Tower Court many, many years ago. And I really wouldn't be opposed to high-rise office, we'll say, on Tower Court, and then having the other parts of the residential really sort of support that high-rise office. I mean, I realize that'll be in direct competition with Friedman and some of the other things that he may want to do, but, I mean, it's something that I would not be opposed to taking a look at.
All right. Thank you, then. That concludes our consideration of item nine. Item 10, then, is consideration of proposed site plan for Bright Park.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Back in February of last year, Quadriga Landscape Architecture was selected as the firm that would assist in the preparation of the Bright Park master plan. Throughout the spring and summer of 2012, Quadriga staff and department staff held technical meetings with key staff and public hearings with stakeholders, and Quadriga conducted field analysis of the properties identified in this plan. Drafts were developed and reviewed by both groups. Drafts were revised and reviewed again by both groups. After the concepts were vetted and the scope of the project came into focus, the final draft was taken to the Parks and Community Services Commission for review and comment at their September 2012 meeting. They approved the plan and recommended it for council's review tonight. It was also reviewed on two separate occasions by the City School Two by Two and is on the agenda for tomorrow night's school board meeting. It's now my pleasure to introduce to you Christine Talbot of Quadriga Land It's now my pleasure to introduce to you Christine Talbot of Quadriga Landscape Architects, who will take you through tonight's presentation.
So this is an update on where we are on the current master planning efforts for the Bright Park. If you recall, the original master plan that we prepared focused only on the existing Bright Park area. And since that time, we've been asked to expand the planning area to include the Alice Norman area and also Holy Cross Church and School Yard. And these are our additional planning areas. One of the most important components of combining these different planning areas into one usable community park was the interface between Bright Park and Alice Norman Playfields, and we've looked very carefully at the crossing of Carey Street specifically, as far as pedestrian safety and traffic calming. This is the overall master plan. I do have enlargements so that I can show you the, the components more specifically. This large green circle showcases the existing Bright Park area and the components that we're anticipating incorporating in that area. This is the Alice Norman Playfield areas and additional Alice Norman area and the Alice Norman Educational Center, and then Holy Cross. Focusing specifically on the Bright Park area, there's three important elements that we've focused on, mainly circulation of the park and incorporating circulation into the existing park, consolidation of the sports fields, and a centralized community amenities. We got a lot of comments from the community about noise along Todd Hunter Avenue and excessive parking. So we looked at incorporating a lot of the community picnic and playground and parking areas into the, the more central part of the park to keep them away from the neighborhoods and to assist in organizing the parking so that we could share with the school district. Actually, I'm going to go back. The red lines indicate pedestrian circulation around the park and also throughout the park, connecting ball field, new adult softball ball field component, and all-weather soccer field, and additional sports field upgrades. The blue line indicates a shared pedestrian and bike connection that connects the levee access all the way down to Holy Cross School. This is an enlargement showing some of the community non-sports amenities, for instance, an amphitheater and a picnic area in this area, playgrounds, updated playgrounds in this area, and water play components that would be open without charge. Another area that we're looking at is the corner of the existing Bright Elementary School, and we've been working with the school district on planning for this area and incorporating more community elements, specifically a community recreation center and maybe a skate plaza, and also a pool. This area is going to be looked at more closely between the city and the school district so that the shared amenities can be planned better. Street calming has been a priority of the community for, I'm sorry, for Carey Street Children are crossing the streets, going back and forth between the fields, there's a lot of traffic during game days. So we looked at traffic calming opportunities, removing some of the parking from the street, adding bull bouts and at-grade crossings, and putting more of the cars in parking lots. This gives you an idea of what the section of that street would look like at Carey Street. There would be a bull bout area with expanded planting and reduced parking and at-grade pedestrian crossings. These images give you an idea of what that might look like. The blue line shows the connectivity of the Bright Park area through the Alice Norman area, a renovated adult baseball field, and connecting down to the corner and crossing over to Holy Cross so that we have one off-street pedestrian and bicycle connection through the whole planning area. That's just indicating that area will be getting a little more study. This component is a more passive-use area at the Holy Cross School. Holy Cross, they had indicated that they were really interested in a community garden and also a walking path. So we relocated the existing community garden that's at the elementary school down to the Holy Cross area, added some more picnic areas, and an updated soccer field. These are images, just giving you an idea of kind of the feel of the park sites, community gardens and shade components, some informal amphitheaters, a skate plaza, shade, and more skate opportunities, and then water play. And that's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions.
Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah. You know, one of the issues that this council's dealt with for years, and that's parking. Parking around the park, especially on Todd Hunter, on Carey, and then what's the street over from Carey? Separates Holy Cross and, and-
Anna.
Anna, and Anna Street, right. Those three streets. And I didn't see anything in here as far as, as where the people are going to park. Because when you, especially on Todd Hunter, even if it's a passive, real passive picnic area, whatever it is, that's where the folks are going to park. They park there and then they walk on into where the high school used to be. They walk on into the park. Even if you relocate the ball fields, people still have to park someplace and then take their equipment on in, and so that they can participate. So I, I, I didn't see where it is unless I missed it.
Perhaps I skipped over that part, so let me go back. Because we did look at parking pretty extensively all the way around.
Right.
And, let me go here. So because we've relocated and consolidated the adult softball fields in this location, what we're proposing back here is angled parking along that street edge, so that would increase the parking capacity along that edge. There's also a parking lot proposed here on the, the school, well, it's, it's all shared property, but parking, an additional parking area here.
How many spaces will be there?
Right now, I think we have about eighty.
Eighty?
At this particular, did you?
Sixty-five is what it says.
Sixty-five is what it says. And overall, just to give you an idea, we did do a parking count based on the on-street parking and what exists currently. And at the build-out of the master plan, there was going to be an additional 145 spaces. And beyond that, we're looking at partnering more with the school district to share parking during, you know, evening and weekend hours. So we're trying not to encroach too much in the parkland by putting a lot of parking lots, but look for opportunities for sharing and organizing of the space so that there's more consolidation of people, where for the soccer tournaments, they're not parking throughout the whole neighborhood. And that's the idea. But you're right, I mean, we've heard from everyone that parking is an issue, so I think.
Okay. Mr. Johannesen?
On the, the issue of the community rec center and the pool and skate plaza and all that, is it just down here is for discussion purposes only, or is that actually being planned in there?
Well, we've been showing it as part of our plan for space planning purposes, but as we've gone through the process, the school district, their plans for that school has changed several times. And so right now, the city and the school district are looking for opportunities to kind of share resources and maybe opportunities for, you know, adult or teenage education and grant funding opportunities. So they'd kind of like to look at it together in more detail. So for the purposes of the, the park master plan, we're just showing this area as an important community entrance to the park area without giving super-defined components.
Right, so the amenities at that point are still up for discussion?
Right. I think the idea was that there would be some community recreation, either offices or meeting rooms, maybe an open gym where there could be boxing, that kind of thing.
Yeah, one, one of the things, I just wanted to make sure, is we've got a lot of seniors that are in that area, and to make sure that there's amenities here for seniors. You know, one thing would be, for example, a therapy beauty pool. We missed out on the rec center for doing something like that, but it's for people recuperating. Things for seniors to do as well, to help with our aging in place.
I think it's terrific. I mean, the, the schematic and the presentation really, I mean, they're, it's the sort of project that we have done in Southport as a, as a result of new developments, and it's the, the sort of project that I think has been long anticipated and hoped for in this neighborhood and for, for the many of us that use the park facilities, which are a tremendous amenity throughout the, the whole city. The, the, you know, one important risking caveat is if people will look at it and say, in the same way that we look at a Southport plan and say, oh, okay, well now that's, that's what's going to, that specific thing is going to get built, and it's all going to get built next year. And we, this is entirely unlike Southport in the sense that we don't have a, we don't have a pot of money that have been paid for by greedy developers to, for us to build exactly what we want to, when we want to build it. And so the, the master plan is a framework to help guide lots of future investments, much of which are not investments that we have direct control over. And so I know there's been, I was having a side conversation with, with Mayor Protemba Desma, who's on the Two by Two, and so he's spent more time on this, on this work, but I know the notion is, we'll, we will apply resources that we have, which are extraordinarily limited. I know the school district is very committed to this site as well, they'll do what they can, they have very limited resources, and so we have to be on the lookout for grant opportunities. Grant opportunities rarely are, we have $5 million available to do whatever you want to, right? And whether that's a, whether it's a recreation pool, whether it's a skate park or whatever, generally the grants are going to, are, are for what the grantor wants to fund. And so thinking about this as a framework for, for how we take advantage of opportunities that emerge is, for me, that's the right way to approach this, as opposed to thinking, okay, well, our master plan says skate, you know, skate, skate park, there's a grant out there for, for some, for a culinary academy, but that's not on our schematic, our schematic's a skate park. We can't, that's not how this is going to work. We don't have the money to build anything close to this project at the city. Even the city and the school district together don't have the money to build this project, not even close. So we're going to need to look, we're going to need to look for and successfully get other sources of funding, most of which are, you know, have their own criteria, their own, their own opportunities. And so as you, as you described, the, the part where the community rec center is, I think is true, really largely across the whole project, we will have money to seed some of this work. We've talked about various resources that we have at the city to help, but the, and they will be good kickstarters for some of the critical parts of this project. But as we, as we, as we think about it, I think, and as we communicate it, I mean, even in, even in the presentation, I mean, the verbs that we're choosing are, okay, and this will be here, and this will be there, and people will be able to do this. I mean, we need to be very clear in virtually every sentence is, you know, our aspiration is this, and we hope to be able to achieve funding, to accomplish that, so that we're not creating an expectation that we can't meet, and that we engage everyone in the community in looking for those opportunities too. And, you know, whether, you know, Rotary Club wants to do a project one year and happens to fit in with one of those, to the extent that folks know that, that we don't have the money to do all of this, and we're looking for every opportunity that we can, in addition to making sure that expectations are reasonable at all, I think will, will also help and, and inspire folks to help in order to make the project, the full project become a reality. But I do think, but it is fantastic, and it meets so many, the vision really matches up well with, you know, from the work that began with the Brighton-Broderick visioning strategy and all the work that's happened with the Action Group since then and, and various other community outreach activities and the sports leagues, and everybody else is, this really does pay attention to a lot of those key issues. The parking issues, I think you've done a good, a good job of, of dealing with. They won't solve them. I mean, people will, people will, if their soccer game is at Soccer Field Five, they're going to park on Todd Hunter, even if there's ample parking, you know, over in the designated spaces. This is true at Memorial Park, it's true at, you know, virtually every other park where, where activity occurs, and that's just, that's life and, you know, living near a park and the benefits of living next to a park in general far, far, far outweigh that. But at least I think there's an attempt to try to minimize that to the extent that we can. The plan definitely takes that into account and tries to create meaningful, convenient options and alternatives for folks to use to avoid the neighborhood parking. So kudos on, on what I think is, has been a significant challenge in the past.
Mr. Protemba Desma?
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate your remarks and, and your conversation about funding, I want to talk to you in a second, but really what, and I'm sure Councilmember Riegus has his comments too on this, but this was a, a really good process for us to work through with the school board members at the Two by Two, because it did represent at least our two groups coming together and envisioning sort of, and getting input, input from the, from our residents in the area about what they needed and wanted, and you're right, it is aspirational. But we did also have an opportunity and as our staff and consultant who are on this heard from us was really a conversation about funding, about maybe it's, one of the steps that we talked about doing on the Two by Two was coming up with some set of principles or ideas about implementation of some of this. So could we go in together on, on funding plans at, you know, again, looking at private contributions to setting up those types of, those types of mechanisms to fund some of this as we could go? I think we all agreed though that we're, we're going to have to be fairly creative, and it gave us an opportunity to work together and start thinking ahead together about how we might solve some of this. I mean, I think your point is, is, is well-taken that we do need to be careful with kind of what this represents. It represents really months and years of, of, of our work, talking to the community, getting their feedback, and more importantly, you know, the visual of this master plan gives us an idea of that what could be and what is, in fact, with Bright Park and with the extension down into Holy Cross. So if you look at the, the map as a whole, and you see all this green space, it all of a sudden looks like a very urban central park that goes, in fact, all the way up to the levee as we're talking about opening that up. So it's, it, you, you know, just as you look at a map and the Sacramento side, you see this long stretch of green that is land park in the middle of an urban area. I look, I'm beginning to look at the Bright Park area as that stretch of, of, of an internal park, and we've, we've articulated our ambition to have in, using these pedestrian walkways that if we could find the funding to make sure they're well-let, to make sure encourages pedestrian activity, to make sure, and it does all that. And, and I think that's the importance and the value of it. And so for me personally, I think this has been a great exercise, I look forward to how this gets, how this gets rolled out, and I do think we need to be careful about that, how we implement, how we, how we phrase it, how we verbalize it to our community so they understand that this is going to be over time, what we're, what we're shooting for. And so- what we're shooting for, and, um, so again, thank you for your work, and, and I appreciate the efforts by everyone on this.
Mr. Viegas?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I don't know if you were gonna add, but I, but, but I, I just wanted to call out a couple of the things that I know we've talked about for many, many years, um, in terms of trying to put together a, a, a vision about what this park ought to look like, and I think you've done a wonderful job of incorporating those concepts, uh, not only connectivity to the existing trail system on the levee, which we've improved recently, I think that's the first thing that we, people talked about is access to the, to the river and being able to view the water from the levee side, um, having some lighted fields for soccer, that you've included that as part of the center, centerpiece of this complex. Uh, you've sort of consolidated the adult softball fields with fencing, which everybody's talked about, the parking issues, everybody's addressed, the connection between this park, the park just south, and then Holy Cross, which we've all talked about in a safe way, where there's calming, street calming measures that allow folks to kind of move, move about without having to worry about the traffic. But I think the other central piece of this, there are two things. One is, and I think, uh, Councilmember or Vice Mayor LaDesma indicated, the, the, the way in which we've been able to work with the school district to get this to come together, this is a great partnership, a good example of the things we can do, but that's just the beginning. The next phase of this part, even if we were to realize the, the vision that we've got here, is the multitude of services that are gonna come to the community that surround, that wrap around the Community Recreation Center. Um, the services the district is talking about providing to the community, uh, in partnership with some of the community-based organizations, is gonna serve as a real centerpiece for services being provided in the community, uh, beyond what I think many folks have, have envisioned. Um, so this is a great, great start, and I'm certainly supportive of what all the work that the staff has done. So in terms of getting people excited about it, but not too excited too quickly, so can you, Andre, maybe provide us with some sense of how you envision rolling this out? We don't have all the money to do it all at once, and we're not gonna have it today or probably tomorrow, but eventually we will, and so eventually we will do all of what we're saying. I mean, I, that, I, I see that day, um, coming, but I, but I, I know that there's a, there's a way in which we can phase some of this stuff, and some of the low-hanging fruit that we can do early on, um, i- is doable. I know the Parks Directors talked a little bit about, well, we can do some stuff early on that doesn't cost a whole lot of money, that'll certainly get the things started, and that'll sort of plant the seed for opportunities that exist to look for other funding sources to, to, to get to the next step. What, what would that look like if you had to begin with what you, and I know we haven't dedicated the funds yet to anything specific, but how, how would you phase that in, or what, what's the thinking right now?
Um, that would probably be better explained by, by our director, so Bob, if you wouldn't mind, come up and talk about that, but, but to, to the mayor's point about setting expectations, um, staff along with Quadriga were very cognizant of the fact that we did not have the money to do this, and that it was, as you said, a framework for what we wanted to do. Um, you know, uh, we swung for the fence on a lot of things here because we really think that's what we, what the community deserves, and, uh, so there's a lot of innovative and cutting-edge stuff that we're looking at. We also know that by the time we might be ready to turn a shovel of dirt if, if the funding were to come in, that this might look completely different based on, on, on how the, uh, needs and, and wants of the community might change during that time period, and what some of those, uh, features might look like. Uh, equipment evolves and techniques evolve, so, uh, you know, we were very cognizant of that, and we did try to communicate that, uh, to both, uh, the, the staff that participated, uh, you know, the supervisors and the coordinators, as well as the stakeholders. And then, Bob, you dig that?
Um, with respect to how we, how we roll this out, the, the next thing that you guys will see is you'll see the phasing plan, um, and then you'll see a cost estimate, very preliminary cost estimate as to, as to what this, the entire plan is gonna look like. We, we think we're fairly close on most everything except what will happen at the community center, because as Andre already said, we don't have a program for that yet, and the school district has committed to work with us to develop that, that type of program, and I think we'll do a majority of that work at the, at the two-by-two, hopefully. But you'll see the phasing plan, and then after that, again, what we'll be doing is using this as a framework to look for those opportunities, to look for grants, you know, it may be, we may be able to land a grant for a skate park from, uh...
Whatever that guy...
Tony Hawk. At that point, we know where we're gonna put it, and, and, and we could land that there, so that, I don't think there's an expectation that we're gonna be able to build this all at once, I don't think that was ever on the table. Um, I think the other thing we wanna look at and we wanna talk about a little bit, and you'll see that in the final document, is sort of the revenue, uh, perspective, you know, we're trying to design some of these things, the softball fields, we'd like to bring in tournaments, we'd like to, you know, bring in, um, those types of things to really help offset some of the cost of operating the park, so, so we're looking at those things. But, um, as much as we'd like to roll it out all at once, it's probably not gonna happen. We'll take what we can get, when we can get it, and see if we can plug it in somewhere. But, um, you will see, hopefully in the next thirty to forty-five days, um, the phasing plan and then the cost estimate. But we wanted to get your, your take on the, on the site plan, um, 'cause if there was something that you would like us to add or reconsider, um, we wanted to be able to incorporate that into the, in sort of the phasing plan. So if, if you guys are good with this, and this looks good, uh, then we'll bring the rest of the stuff back to you.
Perfect. Johansson?
Yeah, Bob, um, Bob, when you're looking at, um, uh, coming in with a phasing plan and, and the cost estimates, at that point, would you be able to identify kind of areas potentially where we could see some funding opportunities? Um, or would it be too premature for that? You know, for example, you know, Tony Hawk or whatever you're gonna do with the skate, you know, maybe Veterans Administration for some part, you know, maybe, you know, so some opportunities that you can identify, kind of the low-hanging fruit at that point?
Yeah, it was interesting, the mayor mentioned the Rotary Club. We were actually approached by the Rotary Club, they're looking for a, a community project to do in the next two years. Um, we sent him a copy of this and said, "Look this over and see if there's something you guys might be interested in here, because, you know, well, let's talk." So if, if they wanna put in a playground or something, again, we have the plan to do that, and we know the location where it's gonna go. It may take some, some things are gonna have to come before others, 'cause we can't just go in and kind of willy-nilly start plugging things in, but, um, I think once we get baseball fields, for example, we get that section done, we get stuff moved over, we start to, you know, clear away, uh, other stuff, we'll be able to do more of that. And, and I think we will look for those opportunities, we'll look, we'll look for as many as we can. We've already heard that there is some state money for joint-use projects for the same type of project that we're talking about with the community center. When the school district said that they were gonna, uh, sort of decommission Bright School, it was a huge opportunity for us, and we kind of jumped on that and said, "Well, what can we do together?" And as Christine said, they've changed their plans somewhat since, but we wanna get really back together with them and kind of dig in and figure out what it is that they wanna do, and see if there isn't a way that we could do something together on that, on that, and, and maybe some grant money there to do a joint project, and that might be the first place where we start.
Yeah, 'cause there'd be two issues that, you know, the extra, the donation, the contribution to get the thing up and running, but then you have the operation maintenance, which we're gonna have to program in.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, I, I just think it's very important not to get the expectations of the people when you, when you push this out tomorrow, you'll have a whole different audience, you'll have a different crowd. And when you do, I think the same thing needs to be said, "Hey, look, this is a plan, and we're gonna try to follow this plan, and we may have to piecemeal it, but we'll come back to you with each one of these different phases and things, and, and, and we'll be able to phase this in," and it, but it's gonna take some time. But I think the expectations need to be sort of ratcheted down so that people don't get the idea when they say, "Oh, my gosh, this is gonna happen in two years' time," uh, because it, it really, these kinds of things don't come together that way.
Yeah, or just ratcheted to reality, I mean, even, even the, the way you're describing, it may not all happen at one, it not all happening at once, don't, I mean, even this, I mean, that's, just like our flood program is not happening all at once, period, we, we know that. So let's not pretend that it could possibly in some strange alternate universe occur, it will not happen. That doesn't mean it's not going to happen, it doesn't mean it's not amazing, it's amazingly necessary, it is, but, uh, it doesn't diminish the final product in any way, to, to be clear at the beginning. This will not all happen at the, at the, at the front end, and we're all gonna have to come together as a community in every possible way in order to make progress towards this vision. There's no, there's no shame in that, this, I think we are, I'm very proud of, of, uh, the work that's been done and the partnerships that, that have been built in order to get us to this stage. This is, as I, I mean, Mr. LaDesma's, uh, short description of this as the, as a land park scale thing for, in our community, I think was, was terrific, um, I really love it. Um, but I, but I do think, making sure we get the expectations right so that people are cons, are, are working towards that together, as opposed to setting ourselves up for tomorrow being a disappointment that we didn't get, we didn't get there fast enough. All right, terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple items that are, are not on your calendar that I'd like to bring to your attention. Tomorrow afternoon at four P.M., there's gonna be a, a second workshop on the West Sacramento Bike Pedestrian Trails and Master Plan, and that's gonna be at, um, from four to seven, um, at the Bridge Room in the community center, and folks are invited to drop in and provide comment and, and hear about that, that particular plan. And also, not on your calendar is the, um, community forum that the port is having, that we're, the, the community input forum on the port business plan that's gonna take place on, um, February twen- I mean, January twenty-second at the community center also.
All right, any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Uh, nothing other, uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, other than the bike pit plan is scheduled to come back before you for consideration in March.
Any questions on the city manager report? City attorney report? There is none. Staff direction members of the council? Seeing none, we have no future agenda item requests, uh, so we deferred our, our closed session till, uh, the end of the meeting, so we're gonna recess into closed session. We will reconvene into, to report out, to the extent that that is, that is required. Um, so anyone that wants to stay, um, for the, for report out of our closed session is certainly welcome to do so, but we'll now recess into closed session to consider our item.